Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're going to get started now. We're going to go in a slightly different order because we have a presentation tonight. We have five ordinances. So if you don't have a copy of the agenda, I would suggest that you step outside in the vestibule and pick one up. So we're going to start with the city business. One short presentation, the city business, and then we'll do the presentation and after that, public comment. So just in the interest of getting the business done, there are five items that we're holding hearings on and voting on, so we want the public to have an opportunity before we vote on those items to comment. So just to explain sort of where we are. So with that, let's see. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits start to my right, your left, and at the back of the group.
Thank you. Could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Meniger?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. Okay. And now if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Henry Bassman to lead us, and Rick Wolf, if he's here as well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session of November 14?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to reports. First, our mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council President Fox. Welcome, everyone, on this end. I'm glad you came out. It's a dreary night, but all the better for us. The Summit Farmers Market is open for a couple more weeks. Head to the Park and Shop Lot on the corner of DeForest Avenue and Woodland Avenue on Sunday, December 11, and Sunday, December 18, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's a little shorter in length, and you can shop with your local vendors. This year's Toys for Tots Holiday Toy Drive is ongoing now through December 15. Bring new and unwrapped toys to the donation boxes at City Hall and other Summit locations during normal business hours between November 17 and December 15. A list of other locations is available at cityofsummit.org. At the last council meeting on November 14, we discussed the growing concern about the homelessness in our community. It was an agenda topic at my mayor's Form 1 Diversity Meeting on Monday, 28, where members of the community and I formed a smaller group to focus on immediate assistance and long-term solutions. There were about 40 people at that meeting, all kinds of city stakeholders. Earlier today, members of the Summit Police Department, council members Vartan, Levine, and I met with representatives from New Jersey Transit Police Department Outreach Unit, Atlantic Health System, the Interfaith Council, Bridges, Grace, and Summit Warm Hearts to understand the increasing number of homeless citizens in Summit and what local groups are doing to provide shelter, necessities, and other assistance to those in need. We typically have eight to 10 homeless folks in the winter in Summit, and last Friday night, there were 25 at the shelters. There are three churches that are providing evening shelter. Beacon United is providing warmth and a meal during the day. I will be saying in the next couple of days ways that we can all help to chip in. It costs money to feed and clothe these residents, and we all could hopefully can chip in. I don't think people quite realize certainly the extent of the homelessness in our town, and certainly many of them, I'm told, are new people. So these groups are going to collaborate. They're going to work together, they're going to fill the gaps in services, and most importantly, we're going to work to find out what we can do through other agencies, Bridges, the county, the state, to provide long-term housing and solutions for these folks. Some of them have mental health issues, and so we want to find treatment to that. And there are resources available, but I think it's important that they all work together. So this group, this work is important, and I'm thankful for the commitment of these dedicated organizations and individuals in doing it. I'll provide another update at the next council meeting on December 20. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now moving on to our city administrator, Michael Rogers, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two reminders. The first one, free holiday parking in certain areas of downtown Summit. Beginning December 10 through December 31, there are no fees required for on-street parking at 90-minute on-street spaces, the Bang Street Lot, and the first level of the Tier Garage for up to two hours. Time limits will be strictly enforced. Fees are still required in the Park and Shop Lots on DeForest Avenue and in the YMCA Library Parking Lot. And then the second reminder, there will be a special meeting of the Summit Common Council on Wednesday, December 14, at 6:30 in the Whitman Community Room upstairs on the second floor. The budget workshop meeting is open to the public and will include a presentation on the 2023 preliminary capital budget. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a few items. The next Summit Free Market event is on Saturday, December 10, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the transfer station located at 40 New Providence Avenue. Summit residents can drop off yard sale quality items or browse donated items, all for free. A transfer station permit is required to attend. Visit summitfreemarket.org for more information. The City of Summit has been awarded Silver Level Certification for Sustainable Jersey for 2022. The process was led by the Summit Environmental Commission and is the culmination of a year-long effort to document programs and policies in Summit that aim to reduce waste, cut greenhouse gas emissions, stimulate local economies, and increase resiliency and progress towards an equitable society. Congratulations to Environmental Commission Chair Donna Patel and her team for their work in helping us to achieve this designation. The City of Summit has achieved Sustainable Jersey Certification in 2009, 2010, 2011, 2014, 2017, and 2019. In the 2022 certification process, Summit received 620 points from 50 separate actions. The major categories in which Summit was awarded points include Waste Management, 110 points, Public Information Engagement and Emergency Management and Resiliency, a total of 85 points generated from the Communications Office, and Natural Resources, 80 points. An additional 345 points were spread across 11 additional categories. You can read the full news release at cityofsummit.org. This is a huge, huge undertaking, and congratulations to all the people involved and the city staff who worked so hard to help with this as well. And then the last item, some upcoming events are sure to bring some holiday cheer in December. Summit's annual Hanukkah menorah lighting on Sunday, December 18, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on the Village Green at 365 Broad Street is the first event. Members of the public are invited to participate. There is also a new date for the Miracle on Elm Street event. It will now be held on Friday, December 23, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on the Village Green. Join Summit's Department of Community Programs for free ice skating, treats, music, bonfires, and more. And that's it for reports. And we're now on to, we're going to do one presentation now, which is the memorial renovation update, and we have Henry Bassman from the American Legion, and Lindsey Street Post, and Rick Wolf, the Exalted Ruler, from the Summit Elks Club, to give this presentation. Come on up.
My name is Henry Bassman. I live at 18 Hartley Road. I promised Nicole that I would give you my thumb drive as soon as I'm finished, for the record, okay? No, it's a new thumb drive. Mayor Ades, Council President Fox, council members. I'm really humbled by the support you have given over the years to this project. If you recall, Bill Rapp and I proposed this project when David Nadeau was president of Common Council. We've presented twice before. This will probably be the final presentation. We're going to have the dedication of the new Memorial Plaza this Saturday, December 10, at 1:00 p.m. Everybody's invited. After the dedication, anybody who attends is invited over to the Elks for a light lunch and to stay to watch the Army-Navy game if they so choose. That's the most important thing. So this is what the plaza looked like up until last Monday. Department of Community Services has been fantastic. Warren Wolfe, the foreman, has been wonderful, and Department of Community Programs has also been extremely supportive, David Guida. On Monday, the new monuments were delivered, and there's Rick Wolf signing for them. This is the World War II Korea-Vietnam monument being lowered into place. If you'll notice, there is a bead of epoxy along the foundation for the memorial, and the front panel was attached when it was shipped, and there are some metal rods that stick up that also have epoxy to hold the thing in place, to keep somebody from deciding to push it over. This is the back panel. If I can go back, the front panel has depictions of different events during World War II: the USS New Jersey firing a salvo, landing at Normandy, riflemen on Okinawa, the march out of the Chosin Reservoir during the Korean War, and a helicopter assault during the Vietnam War. The back panel, and it's hard to see, has representation of men who served different services during those wars. This is the replica of the Medal of Honor that's going to go on the Medal of Honor Monument, and this is what it looked like when it was installed. The wood and the tape will be removed. That was Monday and Tuesday. This was Thursday. Wednesday it rained. Thursday, the public works people dug a trench and installed a conduit for lighting. We're going to have five ballard lights, I'm told. And this is an overview of the entire area as it looked on Friday after the gravel was put down so that the concrete could be laid. This is another angle. There are still some things to be done. The flag poles need to be erected. The concrete, I'm told, is going to be installed Thursday, weather permitting. It'll be dry enough to walk on Saturday, I'm assured. We've got to still work on renovating the big flag pole, and there's a few little details, but by and large, it's coming to a conclusion, and I'm excited as can be. So again, welcome to the dedication. You're all welcome, and everybody in Summit is welcome as well. We'd be delighted to have you.
Henry, thank you so much. This is, I know this has been a long time coming. You've been working on this for many, many years, and, you know, we also are so pleased that the Elks partnered with the American Legion, and thank you for seeing this through. I mean, it was four or five years ago that we talked about this, and it's wonderful to see it come to fruition, so thank you.
I appreciate it. This is important. The men and women who served in the Global War on Terror, the men and women who served in World War II Korea-Vietnam, they dedicated their lives. They put their lives on the line, and for us, it's important to remember, and for our children and grandchildren, it's important that there be something substantial that will help them commemorate what happened. You know, I grew up, my father and all the men I knew had served in World War II. Now it's people's grandparents or great-grandparents. World War II veterans are almost all gone. Korean War veterans are getting old, as are the Vietnam veterans. We're the old guys now. So it's important that we make this stand for the future generations.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Henry.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to, let's see, we are on now to the ordinances for hearing. We have five ordinances. So I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to read the first ordinance.
Ordinance 223268, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, traffic, Section 7-8 parking, subsection 7-8.5, parking time limited on certain streets.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Meniger.
Thank you, Council President. So I want to mention once again that these, that this first ordinance is one of several parking ordinances for hearing today. Taken together, this group of ordinances is aimed at expanding the city's parking availability in downtown and beyond, increasing turnover of parking spots in areas most in need of short-term parking, and improving the flow of traffic and reducing incidence of double parking and parking in crosswalks and other non-spots. It is my hope that this block of parking ordinances will lead to a better experience driving through downtown, as well as improvements in pedestrian and vehicle safety. So the first one, this is an ordinance to add employee-only parking on a portion of the north side of Broad Street, between Walnut Street and Park Avenue, near the Salerno-Dwayne Car Dealership. This will provide 17 new employee-only parking spaces available from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Adding these new employee parking spaces comes with the side benefit of establishing that section of Broad as one lane immediately after Park Avenue, a change that will reduce the perceived need to speed up or drag race through the intersection of Walnut and Broad in order to be the first to that single lane. This whole section of Broad Street now becomes a single lane, and both the Summit Safety Committee and the Union County Engineering Department are in favor of this change, and I'm in favor as well. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. So with that, are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Yep. So I spoke with Councilman Meniger, and I just want to put this out there that it also provides parking for potentially the park line after hours and on the weekend, correct? Okay. Which is great. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the public.
Great. That's a good point. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this? Okay. So with that, if there are no other comments, I'm going to close the hearing. Oh, wait, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so come on up, please. You had a comment on this particular item?
On parking.
On this ordinance? On this ordinance, though.
Well, it relates to parking. I think it's a reminder.
Okay. What should we do? It relates to parking on Broad Street at this particular location?
Parking in downtown Summit.
Okay, well, that's a different issue.
That would be a public comment.
That's a public, that would be a different issue. That's a public comment. That's not on this ordinance. Yes, yes. Okay. All right. So if there are no other comments, nothing else from council? Okay, so I'm closing the hearing, and we'll move on to the next item for hearing. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 22-3269, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, traffic, Section 7-8 parking, subsection 7-8.5, parking time limited on certain streets.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Meniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change the 90-minute parking spaces on the north side of Union Place, which is the side closest to the businesses, to be 30-minute parking spaces. The 15-minute spaces on that side will remain at 15 minutes, and spaces across the street will, near the tracks, will remain 90 minutes. Residents and business owners on the Parking Advisory Committee agreed that Union Place along the north side was in need of more parking space turnover and that these 30-minute spaces would help make that happen. This will also help prevent double parking and parking in non-spots that we've seen happening in this area. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. So are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Meniger, can you talk about some of the input on this change that you received, and that's we moved from where we started a little bit? Can you tell us how that?
Sure. So the idea, the idea began in the Parking Advisory Committee. One of the business owners, as a matter of fact, came up with the idea, and it was accepted very well in that, in that group. Rita McNanny had a, had an idea that making, making the downtown area have shorter-term parking so that when you need to park longer term, you go to the garage, you go to the lots. So that general idea in the downtown, which is also kind of what we're going to be talking about in the next one as well, that idea is really where they came, this came from as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Councilman Meniger. Two questions. So is there a way that we can measure the success of this? Because you had reached out to the businesses, so I'm curious if there is a way to follow-up with the businesses to make sure they're, it's working for them. And secondarily, if there's a reason that people are coming to us and they're like, 30 minutes just isn't enough, and the restaurants or whatever businesses are there are like, you know what, we thought this was a great idea, but now it's not, is there, would we be flexible in changing any of those spaces?
Oh, yeah. We'll sort of measure it. I would have to get, Rita can probably speak better to that, but the changing, the ability to change this, absolutely, that always exists. So I think that's, that's something that can happen in the future, if needed.
Director McNanny, would you like to come up and, and address the, how to measure this? Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor.
Good evening.
Rita McNanny, Parking Services Director. Yes, we can definitely measure the success or lack of. Hopefully, it will be successful. What happens, tendency, is in the downtown, if we give them 90 minutes, they take longer. If they give two hours, originally, these meters were an hour, they went up to two hours, they went down to 90. So over the lifespan that I've been here, we've been making changes when we deem necessary. One of the things with Union Place, it's one of the busiest streets in our downtown district, and what we've seen is people are double and triple parking, trying to run into a store and come back out again. So we, we did take into consideration all the different types of businesses on Union Place, and there is other parking available to have, people have to walk a little bit. We want to reduce the traffic and the safety issues, the double and triple parking. It's really becoming a hindrance. And we were there this morning checking something else out for parking that you'll find information on shortly. And it is, people were trying to cross the street and cars weren't stopping, so, and double and triple parking. So we're really trying, sort of measure that. We can do it with enforcement. We are going to see how long people, we're not going to go out and ticket right away. We're going to put out a marketing campaign to let people know of the change, give them time to accept it and get used to it, especially during, this will not take effect until after the holiday season. So that's number one. Number two, we can see, we can, with our ALPR, we can see how long people are staying in these spots. Give them a warning, look, you're even over an hour by now. Really, in honesty, we could give you a ticket, but we want you to move. And then we could see that, monitor within six months and come back and say it's working, or maybe we take some back and put back to 90. But I really think that street needs more turnover. It really does.
Thank you. Are there, did you have more questions?
Yeah, I could just, yeah, actually, really, sorry. Really quickly. And, you know, and I don't even know if you can answer this question, but in terms of the look of the posts, I think I might have mentioned this to Councilman Vartan, the posts don't necessarily match all of the other kind of signage downtown. Is there?
May I specifically ask which post you're speaking of?
Yeah, so the posts that hold the signs, so they're white?
Well, we had a meeting this morning, and there'll be something coming to you that'll definitely address that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Director McNanny while she's up here from the council?
Yes, real quick, what is the actual date that they would be in, in place?
It'll be after the new year. I don't have the exact date, but we will put it out in press release through the Communications Office. Okay?
Thank you.
Just one more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Council President. Just, just refresh my memory, Rita. These are meters, or are they paying on the kiosk with the ability to pay through Park Mobile and extend their time as well, or no?
Well, no, if it's, but see, that's where some confusion comes in. So thank you for that question, so I can address that, because we do get that question a lot. A time limit is a time limit, just like you have a credit card limit. And if you try to go over that credit card limit, the credit card company says, no, I'm sorry, you've reached your limit. Same thing applies with parking. So it's a 30-minute time limit. Now, we realize I don't have enough officers to enforce a 30-minute time limit, so there will be, you know, a slight, but we want people to move their cars. That's the whole idea, because at 90 minutes currently, they stay for two hours or longer.
And are those meters? I think that was the question.
No, the kiosks.
Their kiosks.
Go to the kiosks, just like you can now, and you can't add time. Once your 30 minutes is up, that's it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council, or I think we've covered it? Any questions from members of the public on this ordinance? Come on up, Ms. Gagnon.
Hi, Dory Gagnon. So at the last council meeting, I came up to try to ask a question when this was introduced as a resolution, and I was told, there was two questions I wanted to ask, and this was one of them. So after this was introduced, I saw these around town. So I was a little upset, as these are the meters that Councilwoman Allen is talking about, the posts here. And since this was just introduced, I was curious as to why these meters were installed since it wasn't voted on. Now, I actually saw these being installed like a week before, and wondering why Department of Public Works was going around trying to install something in the summit, and I was curious, I was like, what are they installing? Well, now I know that what they were installing were the meters. So before it was even voted on, they were already being installed. So as a resident who pays taxes here, I'm furious. I'm furious that I didn't have a chance to ask a question, but this was already passed in everybody's mind. And the fact that this was done and the lack of due process is not acceptable. And I, I deserve an answer, as well as everybody else, the 22,000 residents here. And it's not the fact about the meters, it was the fact that I had a question and I wasn't allowed to ask it. And I'm here at almost every single council meeting, and you know what? I deserve my questions to be answered, and I have to go to Mr. Rogers to ask questions all the time, and I feel like we're being shut down. And this is not acceptable. It's not. So I deserve answers, along with everybody else here. The meters, the 15 minutes that are be happening, whatever's going on, this is not acceptable. So please, answer my question. Why were these put up when there was no vote?
Did you have another question, too, or is that?
I don't know. I'm angry.
Okay. I mean, we'll respond, but you said you had two questions, and that was one.
That's, I don't even know at this point. I'm so furious at the lack of due process, the fact that, you know, my questions, I had questions last time.
Ms. Gagnon, I can explain to you what that's about. So when an ordinance, so resolutions, we introduce and we vote in one meeting, and in that time, we answer, we'll answer questions, we'll do the hearing, or, you know, we'll answer questions and take comments on a resolution. When it's an ordinance, it's a two-step process, and the way it's done is the first, the first meeting is introduced. We don't ask questions, and the public doesn't ask questions. It's, it's the way it's done under the law, and it's not because we were trying to shut you down.
Is that, is that a city law or a state law?
It's under, it's state law, but we use it, I believe it's done.
State law.
State law, yes. Okay. So the second, so basically, that's called the introduction. So you're getting a little lesson in, in city government here. Second ordinance, the second reading is what this is tonight. That's when we hold the hearing, and that's when you have an opportunity to ask questions. It was not passed. This was, this was a mistake that it was done, and I think Ms. McNanny can address that issue, but the reason the poles were being put in is because of, I believe, because of concrete.
But the reason the poles were being put in is because of, I believe, because of concrete and the cold. But there was no, the signs should not have gone up. That was a mistake. And I'm going to call on Ms.
Council President, if I may just add this. So, Councilmember Allen let me know that immediately, and within 24 hours, they were taken down. I also didn't know that they were, that was going to happen. And yes, I was upset about it as well. It should not happen until it's actually voted on and becomes the law. So, I agree with you.
But even putting them in the concrete, and everyone saying, yes, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, it's just been this whole process with Broad Street West and everything that we have to fact-check you guys. And it shouldn't be, because you guys should hold the hearing, you should hold the vote, and then move forward, whether it's in the spring.
We don't disagree. We didn't, we didn't, that was not the intent. We didn't know what was happening. We found out from members of the public. And as soon as we heard, they came down.
So, they count, here's the problem. Somebody has to be held accountable. And, you know, constantly saying, what's the length of the building? Nobody's being ever held accountable here in the city.
Okay, Ms. Gagnon, you've made your comment. We've told you what, you know, we've given you the response. We're having a hearing on this now. So, if you have any questions on this particular ordinance, let's answer those.
15-minute meters that are throughout the town, I feel like are not going to be long enough time for some of the spots. So, I would appreciate looking back at those, like you said, maybe having, you know, 30 days, 60 days to reevaluate those. I'm concerned if Broad Street West, when Broad Street West continues, that there isn't going to be enough parking for people to have further time downtown. There's not going to be enough parking. So, I really appreciate a timeframe to say, yes, we're going to reevaluate it in a certain amount of time. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments from members of the public?
Council President, I do have one email.
Oh, come on up.
So, Bob Palavsky's request, they report. So, I know, I hear you saying that it was a mistake that it went in. Why do we take them down? I mean, if it was a foregone conclusion that they were going to go up eventually, why do we spend the time and resources to take them down?
It wasn't a foregone conclusion until we voted. It shouldn't have happened. It was a mistake.
Okay, but why take them, why spend the time and money?
Because otherwise, they're up, and you, you know, and it's causing confusion. I mean, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't in this case.
Okay.
I mean, really. There's nothing else I could say on that.
Council President, may I respond to that as well? Just, there is a little bit. It was in response to several people who actually wrote emails, as well as messages from Councilmember Allen. It was in response to those things that we did these things, that we took them down. So, it actually, it was the reason that, it was the reason that you emailed us.
Ryan Fallon, 57 Madison. Question, who was the person that directed them to be put up? Like, who was the individual?
It was Director McNanny.
Okay. And my second question is, the free holiday parking, does that include these spots?
Ms. McNanny, do you want to answer that? I don't know how they correspond. It's not till after, I mean, it's not going to happen till after.
My question is.
Are these the same spots?
Are these spots going to be free during the holiday season, and then turn to from 90 to 15?
Yes. It's the new.
Is this part of the free parking during the holiday season, yes or no?
Yes.
So, it's kind of contradictory, I think, in terms of small business support and things, and getting people moving through parking spots. If you have free parking unlimited, is it, or just free?
No, it's, time limits are enforced.
Okay.
So, basically, what's happening is where the free parking starts, I believe, on the 10th. And that's going to happen, this is going to happen after the new year.
Right. I understand the timing. I was just wondering if the free parking situation, and then we're turning spots over so we can get more people downtown, more access to our businesses. If we have free parking, and we're inviting people into town for free to not pay and not reduce the time that they're there, then obviously, it's going to reduce the foot traffic into businesses. That was my only point.
This is, the, okay, thank you.
Council President?
Yeah.
Sorry, may I rephrase a question, if that's okay, Ryan, and if it's not the same thing that you just asked? Do these time limits still apply during the free parking period? Okay. Director McNanny said yes, that they do.
And these, and the free parking was something that was requested by SDI. So, presumably, the businesses do think that, and they did, you know, they did contribute to money towards that. So, clearly, the businesses in the downtown do believe that free parking does benefit them. And we do strictly enforce time limits. So, please, please do try to move, you know, to keep an eye on the time. So, with that, are there any other comments?
Allison Chievo, 34 Laurel Avenue. Just some clarification about those signs that you were talking about. The signs, they're put up, okay, prematurely. But why do we even have the signs around? Were they just sitting in? I mean, we have a supply chain issue. Why would they have been ordered? Why were they even available to be put up?
I think that's a question from Ms. McNanny. You can go ahead and sit down, Ms. Chievo.
We do keep a supply. We try not to order them as we need them, only because it costs more. So, we try to, when, pre-COVID, we order in bulk so that we have them in stock. We have the poles, you know, again, my apologies, it was just because of cold weather creeping in. It was non-intentional. And again, we had them in stock.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments from members of the public? You have one to read, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Council President. This email was received from Christine Lamb. I believe she's at Hobart Avenue, but she did not respond to my email inquiry. With regard to the proposed change of time limits on Union Place meters, many businesses in Summit are service businesses, such as restaurants, coffee shops, workout studios, hair salons, and nail salons, to name a few. Most of these services take more than 30 minutes, thereby necessitating longer parking times. Since there are already a shortage of longer-term parking in the downtown Summit, wouldn't the proposed change from 90 minutes to 30 minutes be detrimental to these businesses? During the busier times of the day, one can always anticipate a wait in line at most of the businesses on Union Place. And 30 minutes is barely enough time to get things done. If anything, I would propose to have fewer 15-minute spots where, which are more often than not occupied by a vehicle that is parked there beyond the 15-minute time limit. That we are already beyond capacity for parking bodes unwell for adding a massive multi-unit residential building in the space of two parking lots. If people can't find parking, they'll simply take their business somewhere else, and our downtown, which we pride ourselves on, will inevitably suffer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Miniger, did you want to respond to that? Or is there anything that you needed to add to that?
No, sorry, Council President. I think it still fits into the idea that longer-term parking should park on the other side of Union, which is still 90 minutes. But also, in the garage and in the DeForest lots, which are not, which are not usually full. Director McNanny can probably tell us exactly when they're not full or how much how full they've been lately, but that's the thought behind that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so are there, Councilmember Allen?
I'm sorry, and just for clarification. So, when you introduce an ordinance, you know, the first night you introduce it, state statute says that you can't have any discussion, correct? Like, there's no?
Is that correct, Mr. Jacoby? The state statute doesn't allow us to have discussion on the introduction of an ordinance, correct?
That's correct. All you're doing is merely introducing it to give everyone notice you're going to be having a hearing on it and a discussion. If you don't have a hearing on it, because you haven't properly noticed. The reason that you have it at the next meeting is to give everyone notice, the public, that it'll be taking place. And that's why you put the notice in the paper and everything.
Thank you.
And that's why if you make a major amendment at the hearing, you have to reintroduce it. You can't make an amendment to an ordinance at the hearing that substantially changes what you initially introduced.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up. You know, I understand the frustration. You know, when I saw the signs, the posts there, it was frustrating. And it's a little bit, it chips away at the trust. And so, I want to recognize that. And, you know, I just want to say to you, Rita, that, you know, I don't think it was anything in malice. I think it was just a misstep. The signs came down. But ultimately, our job is to make sure that the public trusts us, and that when we introduce something, that something doesn't get done in between so that people feel like we are truly here, serving you. So, I just wanted to say that, because I understand that frustration. And parking is a very sensitive topic. You know, I talk a lot about parking. So, I want to just recognize that. And it's important that the decisions made here, that you don't feel like they're a preconceived or, you know, notion. So, okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to add something. So, in the last couple of years, we've added four-way stop signs near Brayton School. And this year, we added a four-way stop at Hartley. And those signs went up before they were black-bagged. So, I don't know, you know, there's, it might be different because this happened downtown. But those four-way stops were up, so people get used to seeing, drivers get used to seeing them before the vote happened.
It wasn't before the vote. It was before the estoppel period, the nine days, that after, when you published. I do not believe that it was, so after, that's the other piece of arcane.
That's the way I remembered it.
No, it was after, my recollection is, it went up after the vote, but you can't take the bags off till nine days after you published it, right?
20 days.
20 days. 20 days, okay.
20 days are bond ordinances.
And it's nine days, right?
It's upon publication of the ordinance.
Right, which is usually nine days.
Nine days after the meeting.
Right. So, the bags were up, and we also didn't want, nine days coincided with the beginning of school. So, we didn't want to take them off and the first day of school, and have everyone have a surprise that there was a four-way stop near a school. So, I just want to correct that one.
Okay, my apologies.
And, Council President, I can speak to this as well. One of the things that I see happening, we're talking about trust, and we're talking about transparency and communication. We're talking about taking too long to make decisions about things in the balance of doing things too quickly. So, I appreciate having statute give us guidelines about those. I appreciate staff being very responsive to being ready to deploy. And I appreciate the sensitivity about when there is something in the public discussion that we need to take the time and to do it thoroughly. And because it's not in front of everyone's eyes, that will cause concern. But it's always a balancing act. And so, I just want to lift that up as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, so I'm going to declare this hearing closed, and we'll move on to our third Community Programs and Parking Services ordinance.
Ordinance number 22-3270, an ordinance of any of the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change some parking spaces downtown into 15-minute spaces. At the start of the pandemic, the city instituted 40 curbside pickup spots throughout downtown. Some of these have been slowly removed over the course of the past two years. And Parking Services identified 18 that have already or will be reverting back to their 90-minute status. 22 of the most convenient pickup spaces, located primarily on the corners along Springfield Avenue, with three on Beechwood, two on Summit Avenue, and two on Kent Place, will now become much-needed 15-minute spots to encourage parking space turnover and to help prevent double parking and parking in non-spots that we've seen in these areas as well. I move to open this hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council on this matter?
I have a question. Yes, go ahead.
Andy, just to clarify, so of those 40 curbside pickup spots that are currently 15 minutes, 18 of them are now, are being converted to 90 minutes, or have been converted to 90 minutes? And 22 are remaining at 15 minutes?
All of the, Director McN, through you, Council President. Director McNanny can probably answer this more accurately. But all of the 40-minute, sorry, all of, there's no 40-minute spots, anyone. 40-minute curbside pickup spots were, to my knowledge, 90-minute spots in the downtown. Most of them have already been returned back to their 90-minute status. And what we're doing is we're identifying, we identified 18, excuse me, 22 of them to become 15-minute spots. They're all on the corners. So, those, it's where you would think 15-minute spots would be, the curbside pickup spots would be.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything to that, Director McNanny? Are we good?
Through you, Council President. I just want to make a note, because there were curbside pickup spots around the downtown, not necessarily on each corner. And actually, what we found were people were actually moving them to an open spot to, you know, not pay for their parking. So, you know, in an effort, you know, we looked, I looked at it regularly, at least once or twice a week, to see are they being used, how they're being used. And I just saw in certain locations, they're just being picked up and moved around. Some were just being put up on top of an air conditioning unit, so they weren't being utilized. So, I felt it necessary to take those away. But with that, again, we need turnover in the downtown. And mainly on Springfield Avenue, the reason why I put them on the corners is just like on Union Place. It gets the public ready to know that on these corners is only a 15-minute spot. You'll be able to visually see that. But also, on Springfield Avenue, most of the stores have a back entrance where you can park on the Forest Avenue, get an hour free of parking, and then park up to four, five hours, and then enter through the back door of the business. So, we're trying to get, a lot of people forget about the Forest Avenue. So, we're trying to get more people to park on the Forest where you have five full hours of parking, including one hour free, and then save the Springfield Avenue spaces for turnover. That's the idea behind this. Because, I mean, I've seen people park in the roundabout by the Tier Garage. And they try to squeeze in, right by the promenade? They try to squeeze in those little, little spaces? And that's what we're trying to stop. There's double, people are just parking their cars and getting out and running in and leaving their car there, backing up traffic multiple times a day, I see this. So, again, it may seem like a lot of changes we're making, but we will monitor continuously. And then, we'll report back to the committees and council on what we see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other, Councilmember Allen?
No, I do see that a lot. So, I'm curious to see how the 15 minutes is going to work. And one question, I don't know if there is an answer to this. Rita or Councilman Miniger can answer this. Do you know if the app has an ability to show where there's availability in parking? So, if we're trying to push people to DeForest or to the parking decks, can they go into Park Mobile so they know where those spots are? Because I know if I've gotten to DeForest and it's full, then I'm just more frustrated, so.
Well, right now, it's, very rarely is DeForest full. So, that's why there was a push to try to get people to go to DeForest. But with that said, I have inquired with Park Mobile about that. And we have to, Park Mobile offers it on their platform. There's a software company that offers this. And I reached out to them to find out what the cost would be to the city and how much that would be. So, the software company provides the software and the integration through Park Mobile that will then, through satellite, show where there's parking availability. Now, nothing's 100%, but with that, someone personally drive there, and then that space is taken. So, I'm investigating all that. So, that's more news that's coming forward, that we're trying to improve the parking in downtown Summit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I don't, actually.
Thank you, Council President, I, I don't, actually, I don't think, I don't think I need, so I was just going to make a comment, which I think is, is mostly just to say thank you to the Parking Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Advisory Committee and the people that serve on SDI. This whole package of ordinances is basically to address, we, we've been through the pandemic, and during the pandemic, we took dozens of actions, some of them were official up here, some of them were less official with the signs and moving things around, and, and we have to figure out now, how do we move forward with these things, right? And, and I think these three ordinances are a really balanced approach to trying to address, keep some of the things that we liked, move past some of the things that we don't have to do anymore, and, and I think it's a great effort, and I'm, and I'm just thankful that we had some, some advisory committee folks to be able to weigh on it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Are there any comments from members of the public on this, on this item? Okay, so with that, I'm going to close this hearing, and we'll move on to, to our first finance ordinance.
Ordinance number 22-3271, an ordinance appropriating funds for the school, for school improvements in the city of Summit County of Union, New Jersey, and authorizing issuance of $37,425,555 in school bonds or notes of the city to meet said appropriation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is a bond ordinance for the school improvements that were outlined by the Board of Education earlier this year. As I said in the introduction of the ordinance at our last council meeting, the total amount of this bond issuance is $37,429,555. And there's three things I want to, I might want to make comments in three broad buckets. The first is, the Board of Education held a public introductory meeting, a public workshop and information session, and then a public meeting during which they voted to approve these projects. Then, the Board of School Estimate, that consists of two members of the Board of Education, the mayor, and two members of council, also held a public meeting and voted to approve these expenditures as well. So, second, the schools cannot issue their own debt, so that's why this ordinance is being introduced here by the common council. And third, a reminder about the nature of local government finance. When thinking about this, there are different buckets where money goes, the schools, the county, the municipality. There are times when it makes sense to think about all these things together, for example, when you're paying taxes and you want to see how much or more or less you're paying than last year, you look at the whole picture. It's important to have fiscal responsibility in each of the different buckets, and you look at them all together. This year, an increase of 1.98% in the municipality, joined with 1.6% increase in the schools, and a flat budget at the county caused a reduction of Summit's apportionment. So what we owed in county taxes, taxes actually went down. But altogether, you were looking at about a 0.9% increase in overall taxes this year over last year. So you pay that, and then it's split about 50% to schools, 30% to the county, and 20% to the city. But there are other times when you really have to think about each of these different buckets separately. For examples, the schools could hire an additional staff member. That changes the school's 50% share of the budget, but it doesn't change the city's, the municipal budget. The debt is the same way. The schools are responsible for the school buildings, grounds, and vehicles. The schools do fewer capital improvements, less frequently than the city does, because they simply manage a lot less infrastructure. The schools manage the buildings, their grounds and vehicles, the city manages all the city buildings, streets, sidewalks, playgrounds, parks, fields, and a much larger fleet of vehicles and equipment. The portion of the school budget dedicated to debt service is smaller than the city's. Another big difference is the frequency of these types of expenditures. The city tries to do a minimum of at least certain road projects and essential equipment that we will replace every year. The schools taking on debt to do these projects has really, they, the schools take on debt much less frequently, about once every 10 years or so, they'll do something larger like this. So the schools taking on debt to do these projects has really no impact on the city's budget. In this instance, I know it doesn't seem to make sense, but it really does only make sense to think about these as separate buckets. So the revenue and debt challenges we have been describing with regard to the municipal portion of the budget will still continue to be a challenge for the municipality, whether the Board of Ed takes on new debt for these projects or not. So having laid out this background, I will stop talking, and I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
And I second it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to open the hearing on this. Are there any comments from members of council to start? Councilmember Allen.
Yeah, so, a little bit of a Monday morning quarterback, because I was not here when we passed the budget over the summer. The one concern I have, which is not going to put me at a no vote, but the one concern I had, and I just want to share this with the public, was, I spoke with Council President Cologne, that the more, the lower field on Morris Avenue, I wish that could have been pulled out, because I think there's a ton of traffic on Morris Avenue, and we are converting that field now to a turf field. It already gets an enormous amount of play, and I'm concerned that when it converts to a turf field, it will cause an enormous amount of traffic, and we really don't know how many games will be played. So I would say that, for me, in order to really feel comfort that, to say yes on this, I would say that the city has to get ahead of the safety issue, and potentially make sure that the county knows this is happening, looking at, there should be a traffic study, and I know a traffic study wasn't conducted, but there's three schools and so forth there. So what are we going to do as a city to make sure that we get ahead of the safety issues so that a field doesn't go in, and then we're sort of trailing behind? Because the parking, kids crossing, there's not a crosswalk, there's not a light, kid, parents will drop kids off, they're going to dart through the street, it's just what happens. So that's my, my number one concern for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Levine, did you have something? Oh, Councilmember Harrison.
Council President, through you, thank you for raising that, Councilwoman Allen, because, as a member of the Board of School Estimate, along with the mayor, we were very pleased that the neighbors to the lower field have been attending the meetings of the Board of Ed, and have also raised that concern about attention being played to how that field is managed, and how parking, and that is on everyone's radar, and the thoughtfulness with, which was put into that budget to align with the program, and always making sure that safety for the children is first. We have that assurance, and we have that opportunity to have oversight and influence it, and so I, I wouldn't be in favor of that being pulled out, because it needs to be a part of the financing, and so I just wanted to let you know, though, since you missed it, that that was raised, and the residents will not, who are in that neighborhood, are not going to let that go unaddressed, because they're not happy with the way parents are parking, and not monitor, monitoring their children in a, a safe way, so just to respond to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Hi, Bonnie Morrison, 24 Rotary Drive. When the Board of Education proposed this bond issuance in April and May of this year, they estimated the cost would be $37.5 million, which needless to say, is a huge amount of money. It was also clearly stated in their presentation that this cost was just an estimate and could change. With inflation at 40-year highs, and material and labor costs continuing to rise, it's a pretty safe bet that the entire list of projects will exceed this current budget. Look no further than the new firehouse project to see how dramatically costs have risen in the past couple of years. Given that, I have the following questions. Has the list of individual projects been prioritized and broken into phases so that once this money inevitably runs out, there could be lower priority items that do not get completed? If so, would a reassessment be done at that time to decide if those items are still worth doing? Or will this project be completed in its entirety regardless of the final costs? Also, Summit is one of the very few school districts in the state with a Type 1 or appointed Board of Education. Only about 10 to 12 of the approximately 600 school districts in the state have this type of governance. Even Montclair voted last year to switch from an appointed board to an elected board. The residents of all the surrounding towns and almost the entire state have the opportunity to have a voice in who oversees the running of the schools, and are able to vote on bond issues like this. With over 50% of our property tax dollars going to fund the schools, the residents of Summit should also have that right. Elected school boards seem to work just fine in the rest of the state, so could someone explain why Summit shouldn't change to an elected school board? Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Board of Ed President, Michael Cologne, here. Would you be able to, Mr. Cologne, would you be able to answer the first question about the prioritization of projects, please?
Sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
You are not putting me on the spot. Michael Cologne, President of the Board of Education, and, yeah, I'll, I'll leave that second one to, to you, but on the first topic, the, the estimates, the $37.5 million was a conservative estimate, understanding the environment that, that we're in, right? Because earlier this year was also an inflationary environment, so that's not new to 2022. And so when the $37.5 million was, was put in place, there was an understanding that we are in an inflationary environment, and, and there's expectations that the materials for the project, those prices would be going up over the course of the next year. As a matter of fact, inflation, I'm sure you all track this, has actually started to come down a little bit in the last two months, but, so, so that is factored into the budget. There is also, which has been discussed with the administration, a, a Plan B with respect to funds coming from the capital account of the, the school budget, if, and, and the capital account of, of the school budget is roughly $1 to $2 million at any given point in time. So, so if there's a slight overage that, in costs, that could be funded with the, the capital budget of the school system. We have not had a conversation about a material underestimation of cost, because at this time, we just don't see that. And so there is the belief that that number, that $37.5 million number, as of today, is still a valid number, understanding the cost environment that we're in. So we believe that number is still a good number for, for the bond issuance.
Okay, thank you.
As for the, whether Summit should remain a Type 1 district, this is my opinion, so I can only, I'm only speaking for myself. This district is supremely well-run. We have very high rankings, and we have a very diverse student body, given the high rankings that we reach. And in fact, I do, I would venture to say, I would say that residents do have the ability to, to have a say in who's on the Board of Education, because you vote. You vote for the mayor, who and I appoint the board, and you vote for the council members, two of whom are on the Board of School Estimate. I know that might seem not to make sense, but I honestly can tell you, I, I served five years on the Board of Ed many years ago, and I went to five years of New Jersey Board of Education conferences, and many, many of the board members who are elected have very special interests, and I can guarantee you that the people who serve on the Board of Education in Summit, no matter where they stand, liberal or conservative, have the interest of the students, number one, as well as their other constituent or the residents because of the, the taxpaying status. So, you know, if, if any, we've had two referendums in the history of Summit to turn, change this to a Type 2 district, and they both failed, that doesn't mean people couldn't try again. But I personally believe that it is an extremely well-run school system, and I believe that the Type 1 district is the right way for this town.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any other comments from members of the public?
Hi, through you, Council President. Ms. Harrison, I appreciate it, I've been one of the residents who've been speaking out about the lower turf field. I would like to see some different renderings of what that lower field, big light-up sign is going to be welcoming people with the new fencing around it. I do not want a new fence, I do not want a new entrance on that lower field, I do not want people parking on Bedford, and I do not want kids crossing on Morris Avenue. There's already been a child that's been hit. I have been adamant about that, and I would like the Board of Ed to really take that into consideration of not doing that. So before they go through with this, I really would like them to understand that that's another accident waiting to happen. I would also like the Board of Ed to include some kind of Wi-Fi for the children to be able to call out on their phones when there's an emergency. My children do not have access to telephone service, and I made a point to Board of, to superintendents ago, when I was PTO President Wilson, during the security measures, to have access for the children to be able to do that. So if maybe the Board of Ed could look into that for children, if there's lockdown measures or something, to be able to access their telephones. I don't know if there's the security measures, why they don't have access to their phones, but they don't, especially in the high school, so if that's something that they could do, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gagnon. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Anything else from members of council? We don't have any comments, correct? Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing on that. And we have one more, one more finance ordinance.
Ordinance number 22-3272, ordinance providing for the improvement of the Summit Free Public Library in and by the City of Summit County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $464,829.80 therefore, from various sources.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance appropriating $464,829.80. This is for the purpose of installing a generator at the library. Three important things about this. First, this will allow for major electrical, heating, cooling, Wi-Fi, public computers, library materials, programs to continue running, in the case of a power outage, continuing to be a resource for the community. Second, this is part of the library board's long-range plan, proposed and driven by the library board and executive staff. It does mean, at some point, it could potentially be incorporated into the city's emergency plan. And third, funding for this comes from a variety of sources, but primarily the library's own budget and a very large grant from the Library Construction Bond Grant Program that exceeds $180,000. So I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, so are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, sure. So I know that the executive director's here, I just thought for context, it would be great for the public to know how long this has been in progress, you know, I know, my understanding it's been five years, but if we could talk a little bit about the history of why the generator, when it started, why it's needed, I think that's a really important discussion for the public to understand why now, today, and, you know, what purpose would it serve separately? I just wanted to ask, is there a generator at the middle school and the rec center? And if so, is the price comparable to those buildings, and are they, where are they at in terms of age, aging? So if they're 10 years old, how long does the average generator last, and would it be a benefit to have another building that has a brand-new generator or not? So that's the type of question.
I think that might be, Director Schreger, can you talk about our generators in town,
Yes, through you, Council President. I can't speak about the middle school, I could speak for the community center. Did have a generator installed approximately 2019, so it is fully operational. Our pump stations in our DPW facility also have generators. They will last, if maintained, 30, 40 years, I mean essentially forever. We don't have any that old, but our one first pump station is approaching 25, 30 years, and it's still fine, so they can last. Their, their cost was about, and I, I wouldn't be able to speak, it was apples to apples, but those were about $250,000 each, three years ago, again, pre-pandemic, pre-inflation, but I'd have to check the wattage to see if it's comparable, so. It, it seems reasonable based on what the librarian has, has shared with me, but, but that's what we have, so.
Okay, thank you. And I believe our library director is here, so I'd like her to come up, introduce herself, and maybe give us some background on this project. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, my name's Amy Bear Shields, I'm the library director. So Greg mentioned the Library Construction Bond Act. The act was approved by voters in 2017, and it authorized $125 million in state bonds for technology updates, for building improvements, and other library projects across the state. The first round of funding was allocated about $87.5 million, and was announced in January of 2020. Our library did not receive the grant during that round. The second round of funding was allocated approximately $37 million, and that was announced in January of 2022, and so that was the time that the library received funding to, received that we were grant recipients.
Great, thank you. And can you also explain, but this process has been going on since the first round of grant applications, correct?
Absolutely, so it started in the winter of 2020 with the initial application process, at which point the library contracted with Mount MacDonald for professional engineering services to do the preliminary design of the generator. As I mentioned, the second application was filed in approximately April of 2021. In January of 2022 is when we were notified that we were grant recipients. In July is when I reached out to the state co-op contract vendors in order to get proposals for the generator itself. We received our first proposal in September, our second proposal in October, and it was approved by the Library Board of Trustees to recommend contracting with our vendor in our October board meeting, which has brought us to present day.
And is that, that was a cooperative purchasing?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a competitive price for the item, then?
Yes.
And, and what is the size of this generator?
So this generator, the electrical cost estimate that was prepared by Mount MacDonald recommended a 180-kilowatt, 208-volt standby... recommended a 180-kilowatt, 208-volt standby generator with a 1,600-amp automatic transfer switch, molded case switch, and service entrance circuit breaker to meet the existing and possible future demands of the facility.
And what, what is the purpose, what is your intention of what you'll be doing with this?
Absolutely. So to basically reiterate, this would enable major electrical, heating, and cooling systems to run in case of a power outage, thereby providing the community with access to Wi-Fi, to public computers, to library materials and programs, and to remain warm and cool in a comfortable, welcoming, and safe environment. It also has the potential to further serve the community by allowing the library to be incorporated into the city's emergency plan.
Okay. And does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Harrison, is that a question?
I'm sorry, you looked at me, and that was like a welcome opportunity for me to have had the privilege of being the liaison to the library, probably when the plans were already in place, because I heard Councilman Vartan say 2017, so I got to hear about it in 2019 and 2020. The deliberations that the library went through in making sure it was in keeping with the library's use at the time. However, when the pandemic went into place and the library became a haven for this community like none before, and they, I got to hear the deliberations of how they wanted to be able to, they had already planned for the ability to operate in this way as a resource to the community. And so the questions that you're asking, Councilwoman Allen, I can tell you for sure that your library chairs who are here, trustees who are here, can talk about the extensive deliberation and consultation with every expert, and including in town, but especially with other libraries in the area, which we know they have a whole other set of requirements to be separate from city government. And so I know, Council President, you know about that, how it's a different set of regulations that they are keeping up with. And so I can tell you that this library board has been extremely deliberative, prudent, and amazing fundraisers within the community to make sure that everything is done in the best way possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Can you also just clarify, because I think maybe for the members of the community who are here, I think they don't necessarily understand how the library's budget works as, you know, vis-a-vis the city's budget, because they are separate.
Absolutely. So the library's budget is determined on this formula called one-third of a mil. One-third of a mil is the legal minimum for municipal and joint libraries in the state, and the public libraries are funded according to equalized valuation of all property in the towns that they serve, not just the residential properties. New Jersey law sets the minimum funding limit for municipal libraries at the one-third of a mil formula, and this works out to approximately 33 cents on each $1,000 of equalized value of the property. However, municipalities can choose to fund their libraries above this amount.
And then the library board is responsible for making the determinations on how that money is spent?
Correct.
And that's separate from us? This is, we are actually only acting, to my understanding, we're acting more as like a conduit for this money because we're holding it for you guys, right?
Correct. And the contract is with the vendor and the city as the, with the library as the sort of party to the contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One last question. So just to make sure. So of the 464,000, the percent from the grant is 119,000, so a percent is coming.
That's actually not correct. The grant is 183,573, 183,573 dollars.
Great. And, okay, and then the total's 464,829, right?
Correct. But I will say that some of those additional funds were allocated based on, you know, discussions with city officials who have gone through, you know, generator processes before. Actual costs could possibly be less than what was budgeted, and we did not want to budget inadequately.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Philman.
Good evening. Just a quick question about, I'll just use this as an example. For the grants that come in, is there some sort of database in general, like we have grants coming in from the county, from the state, from other, from other parts of, they come in and they help fund things like this wonderful project here? Obviously, it sounds like the city's on the, or the library budget's on the hook for close to 300,000, from what I heard. Is there some sort of database? If it's approved at a certain point in time, is there notice to the public? Is it on the city website? Do we, can we see anywhere where, where grants are pending that we've applied for, ones that have been rejected, and ones have been accepted? Has this been accepted in the previous couple of months, so people would have known that this is coming? And is there an expiration date tied to grants? Like, for example, if this was given to the city or to the library right now, do we have until a year, two years? Does it expire? Some general questions about grants.
Yep, I'll take the second question first. It depends on the grant, whether it, but most of them have a time period by which you have to spend the money, and that's very dependent on whoever the granting agent is. On the first question, I'm going to turn that over to you, City Administrator.
Yeah, it's actually an interesting thought. I mean, we have, we certainly track our grants. It's well documented in our audits of any particular grant we get in any particular year, and for how much. We also do have a grant consultant that provides us of all the grants that they do apply for, how much, and what's sort of, you know, what's been awarded in any given year. You see that in our budget, and we list that. It usually comes in as a revenue, but it's also an expense, so you can track it there. But as far as sort of the concept around, like better tracking of grant management, I think that that's something I'm going to give a little more thought, and I think it could be something that we can focus on in 2023, how to better provide that all in one place. So thank you, Mr. Philman, for bringing that up.
Okay. Are there any other questions from members of the public?
Kevin McGee with Land Avenue, I just have one question. It's a little unclear. How much of this 465 is coming out of the city budget?
It is coming out of past library budgets that this, I'm going to actually let Mr. Director answer that.
Yeah, so the, the exact monies, I might defer to Tammy on, but the past capital budgets that were projects that were approved for the library, so it could go back for many years, over the past 10 years. And those were canceled and went into our capital budget fund balance. So those funds were allocated for the library at some point in previous capital budgets. They were canceled. They needed the X amount of dollars that were there, and we found that they no longer were going to do those projects, or they were done with the project. And so the exact amount, I will defer to Tammy on that, but that's how it happened, and that's what the money is. And then there was $50,000 that was allocated in 2018, some of which was spent for engineering costs, but there was about 31,000 there. So it was 31 plus these other projects that, it's over 100, what was the exact amount, Tammy? It's.
Was it about 119?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think it's 119,000.
But none of it is with, from current budgets?
It's not our, it's not from our current fund. It's past capital budgets that were specifically approved for the library.
Like from 2018 and back?
So it's capital budget.
So it's 119,000 dollars that has to be, that has to be spent on the library.
Correct. They were allocated for the library.
Okay, so that can't be reallocated.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing then, and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. So just, I'm going to just explain quickly what we're doing here. We just did the hearings. Now we're going to just quickly vote on each of those, but there's no more discussion, so this part goes pretty fast. So sit tight, and then we'll be moving on. Okay, ready? Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-3268, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, subsection 7-8.5, parking time limited on certain streets.
Okay. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to add 17 employee-only parking spaces on a portion of the north side of Broad Street between Walnut Street and Park Avenue. Having closed this hearing just several minutes ago, I move this ordinance to for final adoption.
I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the second ordinance for final consideration, please.
Ordinance number 22-3269, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change the 90-minute parking spaces on the north side of Union Place to 30-minute parking spaces. Having closed the hearing earlier this evening, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
I second.
Could we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 22-3270, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change some parking spaces downtown into 15-minute spaces. Having closed this hearing earlier this evening, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
I second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Motion carries. So we'll now move on to ordinances for introduction. So we have just one ordinance for introduction, and again, this is one where we introduce it this week, and then, and then on the 20th of December, we'll have a hearing on it, and that'll be the opportunity for the public to ask questions. So Councilmember, oh wait, we need to read the title, please.
ID number 9925, amend Chapter 4, General Licensing, adding subsection 4-21, Establishing and Regulating of Parklets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to add a new section, 4-21, to the municipal code, Establishing and Regulating Parklets. During the pandemic, the city took many steps to help businesses survive. One of those steps was to expand outdoor dining in a major way, using parking spaces as restaurant extensions. These are what I like to call parklets. Some may call them streeteries. I don't call them streeters. Summit's thriving outdoor dining experience continues to draw people to downtown. This ordinance seeks to define how parklets will fit into that experience as we continue to shift things from pandemic mode to normal. In this ordinance, there are three main changes to parklets. One, there will be a fee for each parking space used for a parklet. Two, parklets will be operational from May 15th to October 15th. Three, only restaurants without room for a sidewalk cafe will be able to have a parklet. So Union Place will now have sidewalk cafes only, freeing up all of those brand-new 30-minute parking spaces we spoke about earlier tonight. Excluding Maple Street, sidewalk cafes made up over 70% of outdoor dining seats this past year. So outdoor dining will continue to thrive under this balanced approach to parklets, and I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the third community programs.
Ordinance number 22-3270, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change some parking spaces downtown into 15-minute spaces. Having closed this hearing earlier this evening, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
I second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10022. This resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget. The total amount of this transfer is $80,815, and this is a common occurrence that's allowed at the end and beginning of every budget year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, it's a roll call. Sorry.
It's okay. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance, number two. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is 10020. This resolution authorizes the 2023 municipal sewer, parking, and school debt service payments. This is a resolution that's done annually, that includes principal and interest payments for all existing bonds and notes in each of the respective categories. I move to adopt this resolution. I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finance, number three.
Thank you, Council President. This is 10019. This resolution authorizes the schedule of school levy payments. Three points of clarification and information. One, the city collects the taxes and then promptly pays them to the schools. Second, council passed a similar resolution already, earlier this year, but the fiscal year for the schools is July to June, whereas the city's fiscal year is the calendar year. This updates the payments amounts accordingly. And third, the dates are as close to the first of the month as possible, and the amount to be paid monthly is $5,813,982. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more, Finance, number five. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10025. This resolution cancels the 2019 property taxes for Mount Olive Temple located on Morris Avenue. In that year, the property was improperly conveyed to a third party, therefore triggering a chain of events that included the removal of the property's tax-exempt status, then the assessment of property taxes. However, the property continued to function as a not-for-profit religious institution, and the deed was subsequently corrected. In September of 2021, tax-exempt status was restored, and then in October of this year, council took action to remove the property from the tax sale. And now, the action we take tonight cancels property taxes that were owed. Thanks again to Tim O'Connor, our tax assessor, for his diligence in getting to the bottom of this and making things right. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
the assessment of property taxes. However, the property continued to function as a not-for-profit religious institution, and the deed was subsequently corrected. In September of twenty-twenty-one, tax-exempt status was restored, and then in October of this year, council took action to remove the property from the tax sale. And now, the action we take tonight cancels property taxes that were owed. Thanks again to Tim O'Connor, our tax assessor, for his diligence in getting to the bottom of this and making things right. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more, Finance, number five, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is number nine nine nine-seven. This resolution authorizes the execution of a contract for twenty-twenty-three financial services, specifically the municipal auditor with Wilcox and Company in the amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. This is currently the firm that conducts the city's audits. CFO Tammy Baldwin is pleased with their services, and rates have increased slightly this year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Finance, number six, is actually going to be moved to capital projects. So we're now on to Safety and Health. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, Resolution one zero zero one-eight declares several vacancies within the Summit Police Department due to the retirement of Captain Richard Proctor. Due to how our internal promotional process works, this resolution declares vacancies in the following positions: captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and police officer. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're now moving on to Law and Labor, number one, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I am introducing Resolution ID number one zero zero two-six to approve the two thousand twenty-three council meeting schedule that has been vetted by the council and posted on the city's website. And I want to just make sure that everybody got the correction for when our reorganization meeting was, is January third. That's been corrected, and so I move this resolution forward for approval.
And I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Resolution number two, Councilmember Hairston.
Yes, thank you, Council President. ID number nine nine nine-four is to authorize sick leave with and without payment for a Department of Community Services employee who will be taking family leave. The employee does not have enough hours to cover, pay for the entire amount, and so they will be taking both paid leave and unpaid leave. So I introduce this resolution for approval.
And I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the first community programs and parking services resolution about dynamic ride-sharing, we are going to be pushing to the next meeting because we're still waiting for some more information on that. So we'll move on to community programs and parking services, number two. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number nine nine one-eight, and this resolution authorizes the execution of a grant application to the Union County Department of Community Development, their year forty-nine Community Development Block Grant. The end goal of the application is to grant, is obtaining grant funds in the amount of five thousand for the senior connection bus, ten thousand for the share of fun club, and seventy-five thousand for community room renovations and safety and security enhancements at the senior citizen housing complex. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we've got two, three capital projects resolutions. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number nine nine five-nine, to authorize professional services agreement in excess of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for legal services, twenty-twenty-three redevelopment attorney, not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, Marizidi Falcone LLP of Cedar Knolls, New Jersey, was chosen to represent the city of Summit in the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project. Tonight's resolution keeps our professional services agreement in place for twenty-twenty-three. The scope of the work is to continue to provide legal counsel and advice regarding the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project. All costs associated with this contract will be reimbursed to the city by the redevelopers via the escrow account already established. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen.
Yeah, do we have a total to date?
I don't. Is that something that you have? This is all reimbursed by the escrow?
Yeah. I just was curious, just. It's just on our agenda sometime, frequently. So I was just curious.
Right, well, this is for next year. This is to authorize next year.
Yeah, that was, but that might, I don't know if that's an all total throughout the years or if that's this year. I don't think the.
No, no, that would be a total.
I think we're gonna have to get back to on the number.
Totally fine.
No, I think that's the total, all the.
I think through the years.
I don't think we want to give you.
Over two hundred.
It's fine.
This year is.
This was a bit, this was a big year, this.
Yeah, it was definitely over a hundred thousand dollars. That's what I'm at. Probably somewhere between, I think it's like maybe one thirty. I think it's somewhere between one hundred and one thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Majority of the legal costs were definitely spent this year for just the work that was going into the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other comments from members of the council? Comments from members of the public?
Okay, I'm gonna go again. I had just a question about this, just giving the opportunity, because I've always wondered this. What happens, you say that we're going to, the expenses we pay on these people are gonna be reimbursed through the escrow account. What happens if the project doesn't happen?
Oh, it's still paid.
So they, so these things are funded on an ongoing basis? Like, there's nothing outstanding that the developer owes us? We pay, and then they reimburse?
There are times when certainly invoices are coming in.
But it's not, it's like.
But we're, we're on top of that on a monthly basis, and whatever they, whatever costs are incurred, if they decide to part ways with this, they are legally obligated to pay whatever happened until that date.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're moving on to capital projects, number two. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number nine nine six-seven, to authorize national cooperative purchase from Sourcewell Dump Truck for a hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. Our Department of Public Works recommends the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Freightliner one oh eight SD four-by-two chassis with a Henderson ten-yard dump body and hydraulic spreader controls as a replacement for the two thousand nine International Works Star currently in the DPW inventory. The new dump truck will be used primarily by the roads unit for paving and patching roads, hauling debris, and for snow removal operations. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second. Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one last resolution, which was at the bottom of the finance list, on vegetative waste grinding. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number nine nine zero seven, to authorize a two-year contract extension for onsite vegetative waste grinding, January first, twenty-twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars per contract year, and approve a rate increase. This resolution will exercise the city's two-year extension option with the Firewood Farm through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The Firewood Farm has requested an increase to their full day and half-day rates based on fuel costs. Their full day rate will increase by eight hundred dollars to forty-eight hundred per day, and their half-day rate will increase by four hundred dollars to thirty-four hundred dol, thirty-four hundred dollars per half-day. These increases are reasonable for the two-year extension, and all other terms and conditions of the original bid remain the same. I move this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, oh, wait, did you have one? Okay.
Hi, Delia Hamlet, I just had a quick question. Do we have the data on the number of times that the truck is actually doing work per year?
The vegetative waste grinding?
Yes. I think that's a question for Director Schreger. I don't know.
Through you, specifically, I don't have that right now. It's usually about two or three weeks' worth, but it's also a function of if we're hit with storms, so it will be far more. It's really to have them on call, because we're not allowed to store vegetative waste for an excessive period of time, thirty or ninety days, depending on what it is, through DEP. So this year, I could, I could find out how much it was, and you could kind of back into it based on the numbers, so it's about two, two or three weeks, but if we get hit with a storm, it might be far more, so.
Right, okay, thank you. Right, any other comments? Okay.
I have a question through you, Council President, for Mr. O'Sullivan. Is this the onsite vegetative waste? Is this, the video that you made, the composting station, is this the same? Is this completely different?
No, this is. Go ahead.
No, it's different. That's food composting, and this is vegetative waste, like Director Schreger was saying.
I couldn't hear him, what he was saying.
Yeah, if there's a big storm in town, and there's a lot of debris on the streets, and it's all cleaned up and brought to the transfer station, it's ground up, right? But the food composting is a separate operation.
This is trees.
This is trees and debris and stuff.
So when you have, like, Superstorm Sandy, when we had all those trees that were down. We had piles.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so we're now on to the consent agenda, and we'll take the whole thing, the whole consent agenda, if I have a motion to approve?
Some, ooh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're now on to the Maple Street presentation. Maybe we'll, do people, you need a minute or two probably to get set up? You want to get go? Nope, you ready to go? Is he queued up, or we're gonna have to get the?
What you have to do is click on the desktop.
Okay. The thing is, I think we might need, can we just take like a quick five-minute break? I think you people need to get up and.
Jamie and Lisa are gone.
We're just, we're losing all the council members, so give us a minute while you're setting up, okay? Thank you for being patient. Oh, okay. Okay, we're gonna get started with our presentation. So we have Nancy Adams, the Director of SDI, and Leo Vasquez from Creative Placemaking Communities. I just want to preface this by saying, this is a presentation that the, that SDI is giving to the city. We have not seen the report, we have not seen this presentation, we're seeing it for the first time, as are all of you in the audience. Right. And I'm gonna throw it to Nancy, I'm gonna thank you for your patience with letting us get through our business. I'm gonna throw it to you now, Nancy, to, to sort of do the lead-in, so thank you.
Sure, I made some notes, because I just wanted to say some things. Thank you, Council President, Mayor, and common council, and nice to be here tonight. I, as the Director of Summit Downtown Inc., I just wanted to make some statements of fact before I introduced our presenters this evening. First, just about Summit Downtown itself. Summit Downtown Inc., commonly known as SDI, is an independent nonprofit organization that is mainly funded through a special assessment levied on the commercial properties in the boundaries of the downtown district. Those assessments are collected from the downtown property owners by the city and turned over to us for operations of the organization. These assessments are also typically paid by downtown businesses through their leases and through their rent. SDI was formed in nineteen eighty-eight as permitted by state statute that allows municipalities to designate what's called a Special Improvement District, or a CID, or in the rest of the world besides New Jersey, a Business Improvement District, or a BID, and to create an ordinance that allows the CID to operate. Statute requires the mayor or mayors designated to serve on the board of the CID. And in Summit, we also have three other city representatives on the SDI board, two council members that are appointed every year, and the city business administrator, who is a non-voting member. The rest of the fourteen-member board is elected by business and property owners downtown to staggered three-year terms, and are comprised of downtown representatives, including four commercial property owners, three, or three retailers or restaurants, basically storefront businesses, two non-retail or office representatives, and one Summit resident. So the remainder of the revenue, aside from the assessment, is that SDI uses for operations, comes mainly from the vendor fees that the vendors at the Summit Farmers Market pay to have a booth at our farmers market, because it's so awesome, sponsorships for various events, and some grants as they are available. There is no cash contribution from the city to fund SDI's budget. People like me, who do downtown management and revitalization, are always learning new processes, new, new, you know, things to do in downtowns to revitalize them, current trends, and we often share ideas together through organizations like Downtown New Jersey, the International Downtown Association, and the state and national Main Street programs. When I started doing this work, I can't believe, almost thirty years ago, and I'm only thirty-five. It's amazing. Downtowns had high vacancy rates and had trouble getting retail tenants. That was in large part due to the growth in the seventies and eighties of malls and strip centers. The work of organizations like SDI that focuses on creating a downtown that people want to be in is what we do to attract businesses. So the script has flipped, and over the last decade or so, especially the last five or six years, and downtowns are now more in demand than malls and strip centers, as customers are preferring downtowns, and malls are becoming vacant and white elephants in some extent. The work that we do at SDI includes the less visible daily management work of the organization, managing things like finance work, selling Summit Visa gift cards, helping businesses navigate municipal regulations and permits, aiding them when they come into town, when they're new, and if they're having any issues while they're in existence. We also help find businesses to fill vacancies by liaising between a business who comes to us and, and help them find a location. And right now, since we're under one percent in vacancy rate, we don't have, I have to say no a lot to people, but I keep in touch with them, and, and then commercial property owners or their brokers keep in touch with me when they have a vacancy, if things are running smoothly, and they have a vacancy opening up. So that's part of what we do, the most visible thing. We also work with the city, obviously, on public improvements and different work we do downtown. But the more visible work we do is events and marketing, so that being the farmer's market, of course, and other events we run to bring down people downtown and create a downtown that residents would be proud of and proud to call their hometown and therefore are loyal to the businesses. And all of this is geared toward creating and maintaining a strong economic base downtown, and that means bringing all these customers downtown, not just from Summit but outside of Summit. So during the pandemic, we worked closely with the city and demonstrated their flexibility in responding to the needs of businesses by creating curbside pickups, parklets for dining outside, and the closure of Maple Street, which had insufficient sidewalk or parking spaces for those restaurants on Maple Street to have outdoor dining otherwise. SDI provided string lights and throughout the downtown, create a welcoming atmosphere, and we also expanded our outdoor music program by adding Maple Street as a location. We also brought over some public tables and chairs for the areas of Maple Street that are, were not being used by the restaurants and open to the public. So council members began hearing from residents that they wanted Maple Street to stay this sort of center for gathering and running into friends and neighbors, thus beginning the conversation of whether or not to consider closing Maple Street to vehicular traffic on a regular basis or not. SDI's board voted unanimously in October of 2021 to consider the closing of Maple Street. In other words, it was open to the possibility. As people began responding to the issue in both positive and negative ways, SDI offered to hire a consultant to look at the issue, study, study the issue, and supply an objective perspective that the city council could consider when deciding the future of Maple Street. So that's where we are now. So to be clear, SDI hired two independent consultants who specialize in the areas of planning and traffic engineering to look at Maple Street and provide their expertise. SDI did not ask for any particular result for their work and asked everyone to keep an open mind for, because we all want what's best for downtown Summit overall. So no residential tax dollars were spent on this study, and the money spent by SDI, I'm proud to say, can be, will be completely reimbursed by a grant we received from the state of New Jersey. So with that, I'll introduce our consultants who will present to you this evening. Maurice Richard. No, no, wait. He's a professional engineer with. Yes, I know. But I hope I didn't butcher your last name too much. Thirty-five years' experience in the industry and worked at DOT, in New Jersey DOT, for 15 years before joining Colliers Engineering, whereas he is a Division Traffic Engineer, Division, sorry, Division Director of Traffic and Transportation. He has been accepted as an expert at more than 20 courts, including municipal, Superior, and Federal. He also serves as a member of the Advisory Board for Civil Engineering at NJIT. He currently lectures at NJIT and the College of New Jersey. Leonardo Vasquez is a national award-winning urban planner who specializes in community development, creative placemaking, culturally competent placemaking, leadership development, local economic development, and strategic communications. He has more than 25 years' planning experience consulting municipal governments and community-based organizations in New Jersey, New York, California, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. He's President of Creative Placemaking Communities and the founding director of the National Consortium of Creative Placemaking. So Leo, I'm gonna turn it to you first and then I think you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you Nancy. Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I have my back to you. So we're gonna be talking about today, as you can see, recommendations on the future of Maple Street. I know this has been a subject of a lot of conversation in the town, and we're going to get to that, but what I'd like to ask you to do first is to walk with me on how we got to the recommendations. So what we're going to do is, I'm gonna first talk about the approach to this, to this project, then the analysis that was done, and then the recommendations that we have. So when Nancy reached out to me, she told me about Maple Street and what's been going on since 2020, and asked me what I thought about it, and I said, well, there's two really questions that I have that we should be exploring here. Should portions of Maple Street, which we'll talk about later, in downtown Summit be car-free only on special occasions, seasonally, permanently, or never? And what enhancements can be made to, regardless of the answer, what enhancement can be made to Maple Street to make it a better place to shop, to enjoy? Our work in creative placemaking is about two things primarily. It's about enhancing quality of life in communities through arts and culture, but it's also, and particularly relevant to what we're talking about here, it's about being more creative in how we think about the use of space. And what we're talking about here in the, the words can be a little confusing because we're talking about closing and opening Maple Street. This is all part of a movement that's happening around the country, in New Jersey, and around the world, the Open Streets Movement, or the Flex Streets Movement. And what we see is, in some communities like Somerville and Jersey City, we see that some streets are closed permanent, are open permanently or car-free permanently. Some places like Westfield and Hoboken have it seasonally. Some places like Maplewood and other towns do it on an occasional basis. So what would be a strategy, a good strategy for Summit? And so what we want to do is, she asked me, what did I think about this? Well, I wanna know, I want more information. I want to do some research on this. And so the type of research we want to do, we want to hear from residents, visitors, workers, business, businesspeople downtown. We did a survey. We also did focus groups with Maple, we also did a focus group with Maple Street business owners and with property owners. I also, because I'm a planner, land use specialist over the last 25 years, just did my own observations. And then finally, and this is what we've been, what we were waiting for, is the traffic impact study, which Maurice will talk about shortly. So now, these are the, this is the approach, this is a standard approach for, as an urban planner, we are essentially like health practitioners for CIT, for communities. And so we take a diagnostic and we do, do our analysis here. But in terms of my thinking, what affects, what affects my thinking about, you know, these kinds of decisions? I really want to hear from Summit residents. I want to get an understanding about their opinions on this. We want to know about the known impacts. This is something that's been happening now for two and, for three years. It's not, people know the product of a car-free Maple Street, so they, we, we have some experience there. Also about the benefits, making sure that in my work and the work of all creative placemakers, we want to have as many people benefit as possible from whatever decisions are made. And then the, basically, we also want to look at the balance of benefits and harm. And essentially, does, is the, is the span and level of the public benefit, does it outweigh any private harm? And particularly, is that harm, is it a hardship? Are we talking about an inconvenience? So, you know, what we're talking about, if we're talking about, let's say sidewalks with no curb cuts for somebody in a wheelchair, that's, that's a hardship. If we're talking about stopping at a red light, that's an inconvenience. So we also want to look at, how do we mitigate any hardships that, that come about? So let's start with research and analysis. Originally, Jeff Fiore was gonna be here, but we're gonna have Maurice Richard. Richard, I'm sorry. So sorry, who's gonna talk about their traffic impact study. So Maurice?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, members of the board, and everybody else. My name is Maurice Richard, and Nancy and I just found out yesterday that we've crossed paths, should I tell them what year?
Uh, no.
Okay. Long, long time ago in, in Maplewood. Well, anyway, it's good to be here in Summit. So we, my role here is to present to you what we did and the results of what we did. And the purpose of the study that we undertook is to look at the traffic operations in the downtown area in terms of delay, in terms of queuing, in terms of level of service for all these intersections you see before you. So back in September, we took counts of all these streets, and we analyzed all these intersections along Springfield and then along Union. We analyzed a total of six intersections. Of course, the intersection of Springfield and Maple, at the time, Maple was closed, so there was not much to analyze, but we did analyze all the other intersections. And I'm gonna give you a very quick overview of the results. So in general, we found that the intersections that we analyzed were operating at what we, what we would refer to as an acceptable level of service, except for the intersection at Union Franklin and Summit, which is the little offset intersection, which by the way has experienced an operational issue for many years, this is nothing new. The rest of them, however, had a level of service of C or better, and that translates into an acceptable level of service. So for the most part, the average delay per vehicle was calculated to be somewhere around 10, 15, 20 seconds, in these ranges. Each approach was a little bit different. However, at the intersection at Union and Summit, we found that especially in the AM peak, that delay could be pretty high, and the average vehicle may actually wait on Union, for example, for up to, close to two minutes to, at the stop sign, to cross the road or to make a maneuver. But like I said, this has been an ongoing issue, this has not been created this year or last year. That intersection has been failing for, for few years. And I see this actually as an opportunity to identify the issue, to come up with some solutions, and to work with the county on maybe signaling the intersection, being that Summit is a county road, you would have to get the county's concurrence. So we did that analysis also. That's called a warrant analysis, to determine whether or not a traffic signal is justified and meets the standards. And it does. And also, we went ahead and we analyzed what would happen once we have a traffic signal. And we found, I'll give you some of the results, that the, the delay that I mentioned to you that is close to two minutes, I'll give you the exact numbers just to give you a flavor of the study and the results. A 111-second delay on average going westbound on Union would be cut almost in, to one-third of that, to about 38 seconds a vehicle if that intersection is signaled. So that would be a, a very good improvement to that network of intersections in the downtown area. Besides that, I mean, I have, I can answer any question you have in terms of details, in terms of different movements, in terms of traffic volumes, but I wanted to give you a high-level summary of the study. And again, I'm gonna summarize the whole thing in maybe a couple of sentences now and leave it up to questions. So we found that five of the six, six intersections operate satisfactorily, except for the intersection at Union and Summit, and we did find a solution for that one.
Maurice, can you speak to whether or not that issue would be, is being heard at all by, can you speak to the effect of the closure of Maple Street on those intersections and especially?
Yeah, so fortunately, Maple Street doesn't carry a huge number of cars. If you go northbound on Maple Street.
Excuse me, could you please let him do the presentation? You'll have an opportunity to ask questions afterwards. This is incredibly rude. It really is incredibly rude, and I'm asking you all to please give our presenter an opportunity to speak, and then you can ask questions.
Thank you. So Maple Street, if you look at it going north, it's only two blocks. It stops at Euclid. There is that office building up to the north, and then it services some, a residential community. And then if you go to the south, it extends south of Springfield for about maybe eight blocks. So it is not a regional traffic mover like Summit, for example, or like Springfield. And if you know the town, and I do know the town by the way, during my tenure with New Jersey DOT, I used to come up here a lot and help the community and the police department with traffic matters. So I've been coming up here for many, many decades, since the early, since the mid 80s, actually. And if you compare all these streets, the streets that I mentioned, Summit, Springfield, Maple, Beechwood, and, you will find that Maple carries the least amount of traffic among these streets. And if you go up today, for example, before coming in here, between 5:30 and 7:00, I was driving around the neighborhood, I was looking at the different intersections, went to the train station, looked at the operation of the train station, and there was traffic. For example, at the intersection of Springfield and Summit, there was some queuing there. At one point, the queuing was 10, 15 cars. And then I went and I stood at the intersection of Maple and Springfield, and I could not see more than two cars during this hour and a half that I observed. Again, it's not the maximum, I'm sure there are times where you have more than two cars, but at least I could tell you what I witnessed tonight. So that tells me that Maple Street compared to the other streets carries less traffic. So in a way, it makes sense, if you want to close a street, and it happened to be the right one to close because of the businesses, but from a traffic perspective, if you want to close A Street, Maple would be the one because comparatively it carries less traffic than the rest. And even when we close it and we distribute the traffic to the rest of the streets, you know, we proved scientifically that it actually works. None of the streets go into failure, except Union and Summit, and as I explained, that was failing for many, many years. And addressing it is overdue, and maybe this is the opportunity to start addressing it.
Excuse me, so, that, this is not, that's not, this is not the time for that. Right, I think we should finish the presentation and then do the questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Maurice. Okay, thank you Maurice. All right, so apart of the survey, we did the survey in June, and I'm not gonna read all the survey questions because there's almost nothing worse than somebody just reading to you what you can read on the screen. But we did get about 1,382 responses, and after looking at them, there were, the ones, there were some internal errors in about 30 of them where people said they didn't live in town, but they lived within walking distance of Summit. We got down to about 1,351 responses. The key, there are a number of questions, and the key question here is, how often should this portion of Maple Street and downtown Summit be pedestrian-only? So, and then it was, you had the option of everything from always to, to never. And then is there anything else you would, you would like us to know? Now, we also asked the business owners similar questions as well. And for the placemaking aspect of it, we wanted to find out about the, you know, thoughts about downtown itself, but similarly, questions about, we want to also ask questions about impacts on, on your business, and also, how often do you think it should be open or car, car-free? And then we also had a survey for property owners in, in downtown, similar, similar questions. And so I'm gonna go into the findings right now, just to give you a sense of the, the responses here. The vast majority of them here, as you can see, 87% of the people responded, live in Summit. 13% are, are visitors, and then we had people who were downtown workers and business people. Every, pretty much everybody had experience going into Maple Street and being in downtown, and as you can see, nine out of 10 people have driven on Maple Street. So let's look at what people said in the, in the surveys. Again, I'm not gonna read all the statistics here, but I really want to direct your attention to the, to the box there, that 79% of Summit residents said they would like to see it seasonally, car-free Maple Street seasonally or permanently. 92% wanted to be car-free, at least occasionally. Now, what about visitors? Even visitors were more likely to want to see a, a car-free Maple Street, at least.
Excuse me, Ms. Kramer, I'm gonna, and, that wasn't you? Okay, well, I apologize, but all of you on that side of the room, you have to stop. This is not appropriate. Enough of the commentary from that side of the room, okay? Excuse me, enough.
Guys, 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 stop, stop. We're gonna take a timeout if we have to do this. He's trying, he's trying to give a presentation. People, noises have been coming over from this side, I've been hearing it. So please, just let this gentleman give his presentation. Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry about this.
Okay. So anyway, the, and then about people who drive on Maple Street? Well, 91% of people who've driven on Maple Street say it should be, you know, car-free at least on, on special occasions. So one of the things that these, these findings show that really stand out here is that Maple, is that the vast majority of people, nine out of 10 people in Summit, visitors, people who drive on Maple Street, want Maple Street to be a place to go to, not just a place to drive through. And so when we talk to the business owners, the preference here, the business owners were a little more, they weren't as, they weren't as interested in always or seasonally, but 74% of business owners in Maple Street preferred to be car-free, at least, at least on weekends. So, and among downtown workers, people who would be affected, 93% of them would like to see, again, at least on, at least on special occasions. So what we also did was, we talked to people on Maple Street about their experience there. And for the most part, most people liked their, their experience. They, they loved it or they liked it. Now, some people didn't like it. I can tell you what they didn't like, and this is something, I know there's a lot of disagreement in town, but it seems like what everybody really, everybody agrees on is nobody likes the orange barriers. So, so we also did focus groups with business owners and with property owners. We heard, again, the concerns about the ugly barriers, the aesthetics, concerns about being more difficult to drop off children. Also, a big part of it is about fairness. We know that some businesses, particularly restaurants, that benefit, but how do we, how do, how can something like this? how do, how can something like this, this activity benefit more businesses? Also, not just businesses on Maple Street, but businesses throughout the downtown. We also, of course, we also heard concerns about traffic on neighboring streets, later noise, which can be managed, and the visibility, again, for, for businesses. And we also, some businesses said that it was, it was good, you know, it helped them generate new customers, restaurants added, some restaurants added staff. A number, most businesses actually said that, in the downtown survey, that either there was no impact on their, on their business, or they didn't know if there was an impact on the business for car-free Maple Street. Now, here are my own observations about it. Let's say you have three years of experience with this, but let's say we're starting from scratch, and you ask me what, well, if we want to do something like this, should we pick Maple Street? And I would say Maple Street is a good place to go, to pick for this type of activity, because you have the four parking lots right adjacent to it, you have the train, and also you have the connection, the direct connection to the Village Green. So you have this great opportunity to activate the Village Green more. So you can do, you know, you can do small events, you could do larger events, and so this is a good, you know, this is a good place to consider. So, now we get to the big reveal. All right, before we get to that, I want to tell you how, what the recommendations are designed to do, okay? We are trying to make improved quality of life for as many people as possible, to enhance and support the interest of residents and business people and property owners. We want, we care about the economic health of the downtown, and you certainly want to attract more visitors, shoppers, especially at night, when you don't have to compete with the daytime traffic. We also want to balance the interest. That's what we're about, balancing various interests in space. And providing a greater clarity about Maple Street. What is its role in downtown? Placemaking is a lot about conceptualizing what a place should, what spaces should be. So, the recommendation is that Maple Street, this is a window here, from about May 1st to around October 15th. Does it have to be those exact dates? No. But what we're saying is, this is a window, and it's looking at a season where people like to be outside. So, now in terms of the exact dates, what we want to do is have another conversation with, with Maple Street business owners to talk about programming. But it's not just about the, the placemaking aspect is not just about whether it should be car-free certain times of the year, but also other recommendations for programming, for land use, and for policy there. So, I'll go to the land use recommendations. So when Maple Street is car-free, keep the borders that you have now, they seem to work for people. We also recommend having a small pickup-drop-off area near Union, on Maple Street, near Union Place. It was basically being used like that, but to, to formalize it, to make it safe. And then, everybody hates the orange barriers. There's a lot of things you can do that's not going to, you know, that, that you can do relatively inexpensively, such as planters to help protect, to provide sense of security. I recommend over time to have removable or retractable bollards. So bollards are those, you know, steel or concrete poles, and most of them just stay in place, but there are some that you can actually pull out with a lock, you have a lock, and you can pick it up and remove it, or retractable bollards where they actually go down to, to ground level, so that if you need to bring vehicles in at any point, then you can do that, it's pretty quick to do that. And then, the other thing, one of the things we heard was that, some people, when they talked about the experience, they kind of felt like they were kind of, they, they felt like, in some cases, that they were walking right through the restaurant's dining room. And so what we want to do is create a little more space, a little more of a, of a walkway there in the middle of the street for, for pedestrians. Now, this is an example of Division Street. Again, we are not, we are not recommending permanent closure, but just to give you an example of what, what you can do, you can see sort of the treatments there, so you have a different, you know, it's a different ground, so it's a different sense of, of place than other, than other streets. Year-round, now this gets into the fairness for businesses and helping businesses and property owners on Maple Street and around downtown, a directory. If you go with this route, you're basically saying Maple Street's going to be a gateway to the downtown. And we don't necessarily want people just to stay on Maple Street. I mean, I know the businesses, businesses would probably like people just stay on Maple Street. We want people to walk around, so provide a directory. Also, and this gets into the creative placemaking, make the experience of walking from the parking spaces more enjoyable, make it more fun. Murals, asphalt art, light art, greenery. The, basically, what people are buying, you know, the, the old model of downtowns is that people go to a downtown, they go and buy, to shop for something, and then they leave. But the new model of the downtown, the current model, is that what people are buying, in addition to the products or services, is they're buying an experience, they're buying a social experience. You know, you, today, in today's world, you can buy almost anything on the internet, except an experience. Nobody really has to go to any downtown for something. They can get something tangible on the, on the internet, or they can go to a mall. But why downtowns are becoming more popular, why they're out competing the old malls, is because they can provide more of that social experience. We also recommend reducing traffic, which is going to, I mean, reducing speeds on Maple Street, which is really good for businesses like Robot Revolution and Hilltop, because it's going to be just safer for everybody, and especially the kids. Programming and marketing recommendations. Now, Nancy was telling you about how they expanded programming. As Summit Downtown is a small staff, what we recommend is Summit Downtown Inc. working with local groups to think about programming Maple Street, to do more things. A sound, you know, street sounds are great, but there's other things could be done, like on Division Street, yoga. When we talked to people about what they'd like to see on Maple Street, some people said, how about games, cornhole, that kind, that kind of thing, and just other fun things. You know, here's a rule about place, developing placemaking, you can't have too much fun. I mean, have you ever been to someplace and said, I got to get out of here, I'm having too much fun? No. Yeah, so, the more fun you make it, the more people, more, the more time people will spend there, the more time people spend there, the more money they spend there. And they'll also be telling their friends, and that'll be, that'll be good for everybody, for the businesses, for the property owners, for, for the town itself. Now, let's talk about some policy recommendations, we say. This, one of the things we heard a lot about was the unfairness of, you know, say, hey, we pay for our space, the, the businesses that use outdoor space should pay for it too. We agree. So you have the Parklets ordinance that, that has been introduced. We agree that, that whether it's restaurants or other businesses, it should be charged for the use of outdoor spaces. And I talked about the investments that I encourage you to, to make. You can use revenues from these fees to, to help pay for some, to help cover some of these, these investments. And I would also encourage you to, you know, this coming from a nonprofit side and an equity side, to, to maybe charge minimal fees for nonprofit organizations. Now, the other thing to let you know is, I tend to be, in my approach to placemaking, I tend to be more conservative than some of my other colleagues in, in the field. So I go, I like to go with a try-before-you-buy approach, that you try some things, and if they work, you keep on doing them, or you make them permanent, and if some things don't work, you know, you either learn from them, try something else, or you, or you don't do them again. So, I think if you make these recommendations, you know, I talked about the open streets movements, the flex streets movement. The open streets movement today is what the farmer's market movement was 30 years ago. People like this. And so the idea here is that this is, and I should say, this movement, this, this approach to open streets, this didn't start with the pandemic. Yes, I know Maple Street did, but this has been going on, it's just the pandemic sort of caused more of this to happen. But this is more popular, we know from various studies, like, for example, National Association Realtors, that people want more walkable communities, and walkable doesn't mean that you can just walk from place to, someplace to someplace else, but that you enjoy where you're walking, that you enjoy the experience. And what this can do, with this approach, is to help you be, to really be in a more competitive position compared to other places like Westfield, in terms of attracting visitors and supporting, supporting businesses as well. So, this is, so these are the recommendations, and, and this is, this is, we think that these recommendations will be, you know, a great benefit to, to a lot of people here in Summit, residents, businesses, and property owners.
Thank you. So, I'm going to let counsel start by asking some questions, and then we'll turn it over to the public. So, did anyone on council want to have, Greg, did you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm writing a lot of questions. Yeah, so, well, so, okay, so, thank you, thank you for the presentation. There are some philosophical things that I'll go through for two seconds, which is, is this the kind of intervention that a, a local government should be doing? I think, for me, the answer is yes. Does it fit within our master plan? I think the answer is yes. We have things about, specifically about recognizing Summit as an economic hub, things about brand, defining what Summit's brand is, and making sure that business in the downtown stays vibrant. I will say, I'm pleased that the recommendation is not for a permanent closure, because I wasn't supportive of it, so I'm, I'm glad that the data gets us, that the data shows that most people in Summit were not for that either. I have a lot of practical questions, so I'll start with, because you're standing here, and then I have some traffic ones. Can you speak to specifics of benefits and some data associated with that, right? Like what, we, I think there's a, there's a feeling, right, because I like it, there's a, there's a feeling that Maple Street being closed to vehicles created this great sense of space, and that people were spending more time downtown. But like, do we actually know, can we put some numbers around how much more time people were spending there? Like, did the survey results show that, like, were you spending more time in Summit? Like, can we, can you just get into that a little bit more?
Sure, sure. So, you know, in the survey, and this is part of the tough part of, you know, the challenge of every survey design, is that if you, if you ask a lot of questions, then you lower the response rate, so you have to kind of keep it to, we tried to keep it about 10 questions. So we didn't ask that specific question, are you, are you spending more time? But, and, and this is something that should, you know, could be explored over time. I mean, we know from hearing from some of the businesses, particularly the restaurants, that they've added, that they've added staff, that they, that this was helpful to them. And we look, there are two really good studies. There's a national study by Jenny Liu out of Portland State University, and there's a more recent study by the New York City Department of Transportation about this whole open streets thing, approach. And they found that it has, has helped businesses, I mean, particularly restaurants, yes, but you know, restaurants are, in economic, are, can be a tent pole. So a tent pole in economic development is an industry that helps draw other, other types of, of industries. So the restaurants might attract people, but ultimately, what attracts people is other people, is that social experience. I mean, one of the things I noticed when I was walking around these streets, and in Maple Street and other streets, is more people were walking through Maple Street than other streets. And that just makes sense, you know, they like to be around other, other people. So, I think this is something that can be explored in the future with, with, with the restaurants, with the businesses, but generally, you know, in a rule of thumb, is that if people are feeling good, if they like where they are, they're going to spend more time, they spend more time, they spend more money.
Okay, so maybe I can switch to some traffic questions? So, thank you. So I have some questions about the level of service and the grading. So the grading is based on a level of service for what? Is it vehicles, or is it pedestrians, or both, or bicycles? Like, what, where, how do we get to that? You were talking about Cs and Ds and Fs and...
It's, it's vehicles, and it's pretty simple. It goes from A to F, and it is based on the average number of seconds that each vehicle has to wait as the vehicle is crossing the intersection.
Okay, so what would take it from satisfactory, or I think you said C, right, to, to not satisfac, what's the number of seconds threshold?
So the not satisfactory would be an F, and that would be an average delay of 55 seconds or more for an unsignaled intersection, or an average delay of 80 seconds or more for a signaled intersection. There are two different criteria, yes.
Okay, and so the, so just to be clear, that there, there was no comparison of traffic when Maple Street was open and when it was not open, right? We're, we're just looking at when it was closed, what was the level of service, and ju, and the grading is based on just for vehicles. So an A is, right, like a wide-open country road, and an F is, is, you know, the middle of Manhattan, right?
No As in New Jersey.
Right, no As, no As in New Jersey, right? Okay, so, all right, so, I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's just interesting information. I think that's helpful. Those were the, most of the questions I had right now, I don't want to take a ton of time.
I just had one quick traffic question, and then Councilmember Levine will get to you, but can you just, I was having a hard time seeing the map, can you just say what the six intersections that you studied were placed?
Yes, so there are Springfield and Maple, Springfield and Beechwood, Springfield and Summit, Union and Maple, Union and Beechwood, and then Union and Summit, which is Union, Franklin, and Summit.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful. All right, so Councilmember Levine.
Thank you. SDI, thank you for this presentation tonight. I was very much looking forward to this, so, so glad. I also, as an aside, I think it's very savvy how you were able to use grant money to fund this, so kudos to you. I have a question, actually, I'll ask a, I'll start with a traffic question, since you were, you were there already. So Councilman Vartan mentioned a comparative analysis between when Maple Street is open and when it's closed, and comparing the two. But, and, so yes, I think that's part of it, but the model or the, the metrics I was most looking forward to, because I am a, I support a seasonal closure of Maple Street, and part of the reason I support it is because I concede that traffic and parking are huge issues to residents of Summit, me included, and it is my belief that traffic and parking in July and August are far less of an issue. I believe that that would be an objective and demonstrable fact with a traffic study or some other type of study. Fewer people are driving in the, in the summertime, schools are not in session, we're not hustling and bustling, and actually, a significant population of our city actually leaves for very long vacations in the summertime, or, or longer. So I would like to see Maples, you know, the, the purest form of a study would be looking at traffic in this, in like July, and then looking at it in November, with, with Maple Street in full, open to cars. So then, if we compare that, we can say that traffic and parking, because I know from my own experience in the summertime, traffic is really not, far less of an issue, I'm not saying it's not an issue, same with parking. I mean, I am, I can park anywhere I want downtown in July and August. My husband and I love Summit in the summertime, we can eat anywhere we want, we can drive anywhere, people, another reason is there's a lot more pedestrian activity. So really, I think that's the key. If we can demonstrate that we're causing less of a hardship for people, people view it, to your, your point earlier about the difference between a hardship and an inconvenience, um... (end of transcript) your, your point earlier about the difference between hardship and an inconvenience. If you're calling traffic and not finding a parking spot an inconvenience for Summit resident, then you're wrong, because that is a hardship for some, that's how we view it. We take it very seriously here. And so I just want to demonstrate that it's less of this hardship in the summer, in the, in the heart of the summer months. And I think you did your traffic study, did you say September?
Yes.
Was that before Labor Day? Was school in session? Was it not in session?
School was in session.
It was in session. So later in September, Maple Street closed, but school in session. So I don't know what to do with that data point, because it doesn't fall in, it doesn't fall into what Councilman Vartan said. It doesn't fall into the summer/winter comparative. So for me, it doesn't actually give me information. And I've already been convinced that I think a seasonal closure, I truly believe, and again, we're looking for data to support it, I believe that is the answer for the city, but I, but it doesn't, it doesn't give me anything to convince anyone else.
It's a very good question. I'm glad you asked it, so I can explain to council and to the public why September. So when we do a traffic study, we try to choose the worst time. Doing it at the best time makes no sense, because then you're going to get results that are better than other times. And we don't want to do that. We want to get actually the worst results. So that's why we choose the...
We're saying we want to compare, but sorry, go ahead.
That's why we choose the worst hours, the worst day of the week, and also, as much as we can, the worst season or the worst time of the year. So the reason September makes sense is that it combines the closure and school traffic. So if we do it during the summertime, let's say, we will have the same results, but a little bit better. Everything would be a little bit lesser. So instead of having, for example, 20 seconds of delay at Springfield and Maple, you'll have 18 seconds of delay. Instead of having 111 seconds of delay at Union and, and Summit, maybe you'll have 100 seconds of delay. So to me, as a traffic engineer, that doesn't really give me anything that I can work on and find solution. I want to see the worst, because the worst is going to tell me where are the flaws in the system, and where, where is the maximum delay that I'm experiencing under the worst conditions, and that's what I captured here.
Excuse me, ma'am. You'll have your opportunity to ask questions.
And...
Excuse me. Please stop.
And again, let me just, so I don't belabor the issue. So yes, we can take counts and do a study, like you said, in the summer. We could do it in the winter when Maple is open. We could do it, but really, what we wanted to know is how our streets are operating while the closure is in effect, while the schools are on, and while we expect the heaviest traffic in town. That's what you want to capture, and that's what we captured here.
Could you also tell us what the time of day and what day of the week you did these counts?
Yes.
Please. Thanks.
So we took the counts. On Thursday, September 15, in the morning and the evening peak. The morning peak, we took counts from 7:00 to 9:00. We found the highest was 7:45 to 8:45. In the evening, we took counts from 4:00 to 6:00, and we found the highest to be from 5:00 to 6:00. We also took counts on Saturday, September 24, from 11:00 to 1:00, and we found the highest to be from 11:45 to 12:45. And by the way, all of that is as we expected. There's nothing odd about these findings. Normally, we do expect the peak hour to be somewhere between 7:30 and 8:30, 7:45 and 8:45, as we found in this case. The PM peak also, between 5:00 and 6:00, as we found here. And Saturday is around noon. That's the hour when people are most active, and that's what we found here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other comments, questions from Councilmember Allen?
Okay. I'm just going to jump around a little bit, if that's okay. Thank you for being here. And I was glad to see that it moved in the direction of a seasonal closure. I was a little concerned, all we were going to see was the option for a permanent closure. So I'm glad that that's the direction we're headed into. So I just want to ask a couple administrative questions before I jump into it fully. So when we talk about being one percent, only 1% not full, so 99% full, does that include only the main floor, or is 90%, 99% full, does that mean upstairs?
It's retail level, first floor.
All right. So upstairs, do we know the, the occupancy rate?
No. And that's changed a lot. And we don't get those, that data from the property owners generally.
Okay. And then the list of people, so thinking of focus groups and how that played out, so how do you reach out to those business owners? Did every single business or building owner get information that a focus group is happening? And what, and then...
The Maple Street business owners and the, and the Maple Street property owners, and actually like around the corner a little bit, were invited to both, each separate focus group. And the focus groups were held separately, and, you know, you should probably talk more about any of the process.
So just, sorry Nancy, just to clarify. Yeah. So it wasn't everybody in downtown Summit?
No.
That received it. Okay, okay.
That's just the focus group. Everybody in downtown Summit received the surveys.
Do you know the percentage of downtown?
Do you know how many downtown?
That responded?
I think we had...
We had 50, 50, 53 downtown businesses responded.
And how many are there?
Couple hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
Yeah. So the focus groups.
Yeah. We had, I believe, I'm looking through my notes. I'm trying to look through my notes here. But we had, I believe, 10 people in one, in the business owner focus group, and I think 11 in the, in the property owner focus group. And that's consistent with focus group methodology. The, the standard practice is eight to 12 people per, per focus group. But the focus group was in addition to the survey. So it's, it's never any one data point that we look at. It's really looking at the, the preponderance of, of evidence in certain directions.
Okay. So Maple Street is in the, the CRVD master plan, and it's, it's considered truly part of connecting everything. So it's a main thoroughfare for parents that are cutting through for school. So I feel like understanding the volume of cars that go through there in like October, maybe, I don't know if holidays are a higher percentage, but I do feel like Maple Street is specifically in our master plan for circulation. So what I'm hearing is that we're trying to create a space for ambiance, right, a draw. So ironically, we just approved a whole, half of our street for 30-minute parking, because we want people to come in and out, right? We want them to stay too, but we're also focused on ensuring that there's proper circulation. So the street, if you were to close it, and I, I enjoy the outdoor dining, so I just want to say that, that I, it's a draw for me in the summer, so I'm not against it. But if we're going for ambiance, why Maple Street? I mean, if we just say, because like you said, if we're, if we have never done anything, now we are, why Maple Street? Why a, a, like a major thoroughfare instead of a dead-end street?
Well, you know, I think the market has really been telling us for years that Maple Street is a destination. That's why the fine dining restaurants are there. That people go, you know, be, Maple Street has, does, it connects to the Village. It connects, it's near the train. It's also the street that has, you've got all those parking lots around there. So in a sense, and the, you know, when this has been happening since 2020, 21, and this year, we also see that the market's been voting with their feet to go to, to go to Maple Street. So it, you know, my work tends to be market guided. So I look at this and say, hey, how can you, how can you enhance this?
Okay. And then when we closed the street, I, what I, was interesting to see is that you were talking about putting murals and art. So one, that feels more permanent than seasonal. So if you start painting and putting art up, it feels more full-time. But when you were talking about potentially putting other vendors there, so my question would be, how much does the average person, retailer spend in rent for their space? And, which I would assume, I will give, I'll just say an average of 3, 3,500 to 10,000, I guess, right? So if the average business is spending that, there is a draw that you have a closed space. But if you are starting to bring other nonprofits or something onto a closed road, does that create fairness? Does that feel fair to other retailers that they could, they can pay less to be on a, a road? And secondarily, are, is it things that will only be complementary of the businesses that we have? Are they going to compete with those businesses? And would you have a food truck? Because you can't stop at one type of business or another. So I'm just curious what your vision is for that.
Sure. So I, I mean, I think in terms of, when I talk about nonprofits and I talk about groups, it's really about programming the space, encouraging people, you know. So the idea is that everything doesn't weigh on Summit Downtown, Inc., that there's other groups that might be want to use that space, and they're not competing with the stores. In fact, if they're doing things, games, you know, fun activities, they're bringing people to, to Maple Street, they are, it's, the businesses are essentially getting a windfall opportunity there from all those people. The question is how they take advantage of, of those opportunities. And also, yes, murals, art, et cetera, it's permanent. So the idea of Maple Street being a destination is not just a seasonal, but rather that Maple Street becomes, this part of Maple Street becomes a year-round destination, that people get to know, people think about, hey, Maple Street's a fun place to be. I want to go there. And that certainty is also going to help both the businesses and property owners, because whether it's stock markets or economic development, one of the biggest barriers to investment is uncertainty. So by going in this direction, saying this is a policy that we're going to, you're sending a message to, to the world and to the people who you want to bring to downtown, whether it's shoppers or, or businesses, that this is what Maple Street is going to be all year round. And, you know, sometimes it'll be car-free, and sometimes it won't. It'll be, you know, you can drive on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you for this presentation. I just was really reflecting, Nancy, on the clarification you gave about your existence and how I can remember...
Your organization's not me, right?
Well, I'm sorry. I do tend to associate a person with the, with, with the entity. But I just clearly think back to when you actively engaged Summit in Girls' Night Out, and how that made Summit the destination place for people coming all over. And we got to really know our businesses in town. And it was just a delight. And it's when I began to understand how your, your entity was a, and I, and I know it's through legislation, but it was something that was happening about how to bring community engagement in a way that benefits not just the businesses, but also the residents and economically. And so I am a, you know, a person who, I just love Summit and love when we're doing things that bring us together. And, and I know the trend that you were talking about, the gentleman, about how other towns, and I, I get to travel to other cities, especially because my kids live in other cities. And, and I know this trend to have that experience. And it, it tends to worry, I, well, I guess I was first worried, because God, is everything all about having drinks everywhere? And, you know, is, is this the way, you know, places are, are turning in that direction? So I like that you had researched studies to say, to say, what is good practice, what's happening. I remember I got to go for the first time to, to Barcelona, and that was what was the draw of just how welcoming outdoor, and of course, it's weather. It's weather-related. But it wasn't just young people drinking. It was families. And so I appreciate the intention and know that we are tasked with the responsibility of really knowing the downside, the downside of doing this. And, and that's what we really needed to hear. If, if you're going to do more, provide more data to us, we really need to understand the downside and where, where towns have learned how to do it better. Because, you know, Summit has just super high standards. And we, we love our children being able to be in town. And, and we want our businesses, all of our businesses, to do well. So that's where I really appreciate some of the questions that came up about who's being disadvantaged in this. And that's why Girls' Night was everything, because we got to go into places I didn't even know were, were here, and because we change over. So, and then I do like the idea of the economic trend of how it benefits the community. And, and it never, ever crossed my mind to be permanent because of the winter aggravation. And, and then the other thing for our traffic person, we didn't get to hear about lunchtime and the craziness around Summit with lunchtime cars, how that traffic pattern made, makes it more miserable, and why I am for a, a car-free, but I know that there, I learned from Rita, some of the disadvantages, and that does, and from Rosie, how our businesses aren't able to have their deliveries and all of those kinds of things, which is a big burden on the city. So that's why I, I would ask you, thank you for allowing us to dream and, and, and look for ways to bring humanity back to our internet-driven experience, lifestyle now. But we do need to understand the downside. And that's, that's basically my reflection. I guess I didn't have a question.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Anyone on this end of the day have anything, or shall we turn it over to, yes?
Oh, sorry. I didn't, if anyone else has a question.
Go ahead. And then we're going to turn it over to the public.
Okay, great. It'll be really quick. We've been advised that the legal aspects of closing a street even seasonally are very complex. Do you have insight as a planner and a consultant into any of the legal aspects that other municipalities have done successfully, just from your point of view, not the...
I think the...
Oh, great. Okay. Sure.
Oh, yeah. It's more DOT.
Yeah, Erin. Okay.
Or the, or the...
Yeah.
So from a legal aspect, we will obtain an approval from the Jersey DOT. And there are a couple of conduits we could go after. There is a yearly approval where you would submit an application to DOT and tell them we want to close the street from this date to that date. They will approve that closure. Then we ask questions. And by the way, I used to do that when I worked at DOT, so I know the process. The questions would be, for example, what's going to happen to emergency vehicles, deliveries, pedestrians, which are things that we're addressing anyway. And then they will issue the approval, and then every year we would have to, to request the same approval again and again. Or there is a provision in Title 40 that allows a municipality to permanently transform a certain street. They refer to it as a pedestrian mall. And this could be, and I said, I'm saying permanently, but it could be permanently on a partner basis. But permanently meaning year after year. So we would do an ordinance, and we would have that language in it. That would say, for example, from mid-May... example, from mid-May to mid-October, or whatever the dates are. And then we submit that ordinance, the DOT will submit a traffic study that would be prepared, and the DOT will provide an approval. And that's good because that covers the town in case somebody complains one day, you know, people do all, all types of complaints. There is no, as far as I know, there is no other legal consequences that I'm aware of. And I've been through several closures in the state. So once you get DOT approval, you're basically covered.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if no one else on the day has questions, I'll open it up to members of the public. So we have a lot of people, so I'm going to ask folks to, to keep it, wait, Rita, did you have something?
I have a couple of questions. When it gets time.
Oh, well, yeah, come on up then. That's a.
And I was thinking you were pointing to the engineer. I thought you were going to let Aaron give us some of them, but I forgot enough.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we're, we're making use of the experts that we have here tonight. We'll still be able to, to ask Aaron all of our questions.
Again, Rita McDaniel, Parking Services Director, just a couple of questions on, I know the times that the survey was done, but one mentioned lunchtime, which is big for traffic, but also after school. And I think that's an issue that I've heard from parents trying to get across town and with Maple Street being closed. But one question I do want to visit is, was there any consideration done with like a town like Red Bank that has a street similar to our downtown that closes it just for weekends? So the reason why I'm saying that is because in some circumstances, this might help the current merchants that are on that street that don't have outside dining or outside sidewalk cafes. And then this way, it could help them that if there is something that someone needs to get from that store or visit that store, they can do it, let's say, Monday through Wednesday. And that, I think, would go a long way with helping, because I've talked to a lot of the merchants there, when I get the complaints that, you know, we don't have access, that, my customers can't come, I'm losing business, from non-restaurant businesses there. So I just want to give all of council that information. And also, I'll let Aaron speak to it, but from my understanding, I know the bollards are ugly, they're not very aesthetically pleasing, and that the planters are talked about. Well, we had those in the forest, and I just want to let everyone know that when they came into forest, people moved them with their cars. So from a safety perspective, I'm not an engineer, I'm just giving you my experience when we had them in the forest lanes. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Can you just address the idea of a weekend closure and the practicality of that, please?
Sure. So, I mean, we did ask, we did ask people about, about their preference of whether seasonal, I'm just looking at my notes here and I need my glasses. So, but what we found, most people, the, the majority, a slight majority of people favored either a combination, a permanent or seasonal over, over a weekend closure. I can, I think I would probably ask maybe Nancy to speak about the, for the restaurants, I think it might be a challenge for them if you just do it on weekends, because they're basically having to, to move all these chairs, you know, and tables, and they might not want to do it. So I, you know, that's, I could tell you from working six years in restaurants, but...
I don't know that I could, could speak to this at all now, and it's really something that I think goes for a deeper dive as you decide what you want to do.
Sure.
You know, if you're doing seasonal closure, you can put street furniture out, and, and a lot of other things, and keep it closed a little more permanently. Red Bank, to Rita's point, has retractable bollards that get buried in the street. It's quite an expensive infrastructure project, and it depends on where the sewers are, where the pipes are, where all sorts of stuff that we don't think about underground is. And so I don't know that.
Okay. Thank you. So at this point, if members of the public have questions, come on up. So I'm going to ask folks.
My name is Ingeborg Villas. I live in Pineby Place, and I cross town at least three, four times a day, and I know the traffic better than most traffic codes. Because my family lives on the other side, and I bike there, I walk there, and I drive. And most of the time, I walk faster than I drive, because the traffic is terrible. On the Union Place, as you know, they double park in order to wait for parking with no regard to the driver behind them, and often the traffic jam is three blocks up to Pineby Place from the Y. And if the gentleman thinks that Mabel is not important, I disagree, because there is the only pharmacy in town where lots of people have to drive. And also, on the other side is the YMCE, where lots of people, including me, go daily, and they often have to drive to carry things, and there's also the library. So if you can reach the village green, you have to reach that too. So it's very important to have that at least in winter. In summer, I agree, less traffic, and you also have, people want to have fun, but the busiest street really is not Mabel. The busiest street is actually Beechwood, that part where Boxfoot Cafe is, and where these little chairs and, and these sculptures are. That's where people want to have fun. And I was going to say much more, but I'm too tired now. It's almost 11:00, and I need to go to bed. I'm sorry. Okay? I just wanted to say that. Because, you know, and I don't understand all the milli seconds you say or so. You have to explain it in a way that we understand you better. The traffic sometimes, I agree, the traffic, when the train comes, is going into Mabel and blocks Mabel completely, and you can't even drive or walk there anymore. And nothing is being done. There must be a reason for it, but closing it all here is, is not the solution. Can you imagine the Elk Club, for example, they have a party, and then they want to unload in the rain their people, they can't even drive in there anymore if you close it all here.
Ma'am, we're not talking about an all-year closure, and it's also not, it's also not legal.
Summit Patch, they talked about that.
Well, that was, unfortunately, Summit Patch did not, did not report it correctly.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's what I, I.
I wish they had reported it more accurately.
I'm very glad to hear that. I'm very glad to hear that. That's a good decision.
And the recommendation that, that we've heard tonight is for a seasonal closure. So, but just to be clear, Maple Street is not, you know, when people say you can't drop someone off, that's not legal anyway, when people are dropping people off in front of the Elk Club.
Well, there's a lot of things which are not legal.
I understand, but, you know, but we're, we're preserving, you know, the right to do something that isn't actually not legal, is what you're arguing.
One more thing. There is.
Ma'am, you can't talk from back there.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's just that the tele.
There is a 15-minute parking thing right in front of the crossing of Springfield and Summit, and, and people are too lazy to carry their pizza to the next parking space. Why would it even be something like that? The whole traffic, and you know it's a thorough road, how busy that street is, is always blocked at that crossing by the 15 minutes, you have to sit in the car and have to pick up their pizza. Wrong, I think. You know, really, truly. I mean, if you go to Europe, nobody even expected to, to, to drive there and sit there. They walk, very easy. People walk, and maybe just these people might go to the gym and walk in the gym on a machine. And then they're too lazy to go two steps to get the pizza. And we, I mean, I drive there three times a day. It drives me crazy.
You're right.
If not?
Thank you for your comment. Okay, let's let someone else have a turn. Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions?
Claire Toth at 11 Sunset Drive, and it's just, I think it's a simple question for you, Mr. Vasquez. When you were running through the survey results, you skipped over the property owners.
Um.
I thought you, you showed, you showed the, the responses of the different groups, but, but not, not the responses of the property owners. I thought you just skipped over that slide.
Sure. So, so, so in terms of the survey, only five property owners responded to the survey. So we, so we relied more on the focus group there with, with the property owners. So with.
And what did the focus group show?
Well, the focus group, a number of owners were really concerned about it. They were opposition to, to, you know, to clo, to the car-free Maple Street. There were concerns about traffic and, and noise in particular. Those were the, those were the main concerns that, that I, you know, just, and the barricades as, as well. Those were, those were the main concerns that.
And these were Maple Street property owners.
Maple Street property owners, yeah.
Okay, thanks. So next, next commenter.
Good morning, President Fox.
Good evening.
Do you remember last time?
Yes.
I was going to bring my own timer for three minutes, but that lovely.
I'll let you know.
Oh, I'm sure. I was looking at pages of Oprah requests that came through to my group, and I think I found it's a resolution dated February 15th, 2020.
Can you give us the mic?
I'm sorry. The resolution number, or is it docket number, Rosie, 40177? Would that be a docket number?
Resolution number.
Whatever that stuff is. Anyhow, so February 22nd, and it was voted upon here, authorize temporary and extended closure of a section of Maple Street, resolution number 39359. Pursuant to NJSA 39,48, street closings that exceed 48 hours continuously require the approval of the Commissioner of the DOT.
Correct. Morris?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to direct questions, so anybody else can. Pending approval from the New Jersey DOT, Maple Street shall be closed to vehicular traffic.
Correct. Say that again. I'm, I'm following the.
Pending. Pending.
That's the resolution.
Pending approval from New Jersey DOT, Maple Street shall be closed to vehicular traffic.
Yes.
I'm getting somewhere with this. All restaurants possessing a liquor license shall be subject to obtaining the required permissions from the state of New Jersey Alcohol Beverage and Control. You mentioned this last time with the city solicitor here, and I mentioned it in a letter to the editor, which I forwarded to council, I forwarded to SDI board, and so on. I don't think anything of this was done. So I have to say here, I think this whole 2022 season was done illegally.
Actually, that's incorrect. If you, if you study the governor's executive orders, the governor extended the executive order for this last summer and extended the, the liquor license for outdoors so that people could recover.
Until when?
It was until all of his executive orders, when he declared the, there's no longer an emergency, which I think he ended that in, I want to say, late October, but it was extended.
Right. Exactly. Okay.
So, so everything was done legally in compliance with the executive orders issued by Governor Murphy for 2021 and 22.
Well, you could tell us this, because I'm sure you're the person that applies for these applications. Did you apply for a DOJ, NJDOT application?
You didn't need to because of the governor's executive orders.
You said it just ended in October.
No. The, the closure, when it was done back in, in the, in the winter of 2022, the governor had extended it for the, for this year. Coming next year, we would have to do that. And that's what I said at the last meeting. And actually, the gentleman, the traffic engineer spoke to the pedestrian mall. It's laid out in statute, and it occurs in a special improvement district, and there's criteria, and the criteria, one of the criteria is doing the traffic study exactly what the engineer testified to. But Governor Murphy, based on the pandemic, issued a number of executive orders that permitted the parklets, that permitted road closures, that permitted outdoor dining, things that we've never experienced before. And the whole purpose of it was, is to try to revitalize the economy and not have all these businesses go into, to close.
Excuse me. Does that take from my time?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just? Wait one second. I'm, I'm something to add.
Tony, through you, Council President. Tony, the state also just extended the COVID-19, the COVID-19 expansion permits for alcohol through November of 2024.
Okay.
So just so you know, there is that, they do apply, the alcohol owners apply to the state directly. They don't go through here.
Very good. So at the 11, November 1st, 2022 meeting, we had a very organized group here, people very excited, and then everybody left, right? Like, after this, we'll all leave. But I, I looked on YouTube to see who was, who was left here, and I think maybe it was one or two people. And all of a sudden, now, council, everyone said they're not in favor of permanent, that it was never brought up to be permanent. Yes, it was always brought up to be permanent. I have plenty of Oprah request documents and so on and so forth that says that you want to do it permanent, and it's not going to happen, and we know this. Arduous. Love the word, city solicitor, arduous. He said that a permanently closed pedestrian mall, whatever you want to call Maple Street, would be arduous, correct?
It takes work. You just heard it from the engineer. You have to go to the DOT, requires DOT approval.
Exactly.
You have to have a traffic study, which they've done, but it is an ar, it's, it's not something you could, a town could just go and put up bollards and say, we're closing the street.
Exactly. And you also stated that even doing it seasonally would be arduous, and...
It's the same standard. You just heard it, sir.
Exactly. So if you, for 48-hour continuous, you need to have state approval. We're going to have to go through lots and lots of studies, lawsuits, okay, which will be coming soon. This is ridiculous. Thank you for your, for your studies, and also thank you for cementing to all of us here that this really is a bad, bad idea for any time of the year. We have a traffic engineer saying that Maple Street was the best street to do this? Let me refresh people's memory, because I've been on the street for 40 years. In one of the master plans, I don't know what it was, they said that Beechwood Road should be shut down. And everybody went nuts, and it disappeared. Now you're saying a thoroughfare street like Maple Street is the best street? Wow. That's ludicrous, man. It's nuts. This is, this is just a joke. Put this to bed, and let's get back to normal. You don't have space on Maple Street to put outside dining. I didn't tell you to pick the place, and you're also leasees. You could be here tomorrow and gone the next day. We're going to change all this around for leaseholders? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Right. Are there any other comments, questions?
How you doing? Bob Palowski, Three Crest Acre Court. I got to tell you, I feel like a mosquito at a nudist colony. I don't know where to start. That's Tom Saw. The, to build on what Tony was just asking about the statute, if we didn't, if we did this based on the governor's order, why did the ordinance list everything from the statute and say that this council found it?
Ask your questions, and then we'll address them.
Okay. It's going to be a mix of.
I mean, this is really intended to be a time to ask questions of the, the presenters.
Okay.
I mean, you feel free, you can spend your three minutes on this if you want, but...
Are you seriously going to base a vote as to whether to close Maple Street for any period of time on the study that we heard tonight?
There's no vote tonight. There is no vote. We're not voting tonight.
No. Are you seriously ultimately going to? Because it, it just didn't address so many things. I mean, I heard, I heard this young one say, it's going to be safer, right? Based on what? Why, why is, is Summit going to be safer?
Why don't you ask him that instead of asking us rhetorical questions, sir?
He said it's going to be safer to have Maple Street closed. Why?
I said that we do.
You have to come up to the microphone.
This is like a...
You can do the microphone over there if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, otherwise, no one can hear your answer.
Okay.
At home, on TV.
On TV.
It's kind of like British Parliament here.
Yeah, you can.
Questions to the Prime Minister.
Exactly.
So what I said was that reducing traffic speeds is safer. Now, there's been studies done, again, looking at Jenny Liu, other studies done, that when you can reduce traffic speeds, it is safer for people. And it just makes sense. If people are driving fast, there's more likely to be, to be accidents. So that, that's what, that's what I was saying about reducing traffic.
But how does closing Maple Street reduce traffic speed?
Well, if you, if you close, if you make Maple Street car-free, then you don't have cars on Maple Street. So I'm not sure what. It, it makes it, I mean, what, look, what we're, what people are saying from the surveys, people want a place to go socialize. They want a place, they like going to a car-free, to a car-free area. And so if you have an area that's car-free, it is going to be safer for them, because cars, when you introduce, when you have cars running past or driving past, it, it does introduce a greater element of risk. So in terms of, of the... So, in terms of, of the traffic study, was there any, I think you said there was no comparative study made, right?
We, we analyzed the...
Like I said before, we analyzed the intersections at the worst time. So doing a comparative study will show us better volumes. There is no really use for that, there's nothing we could do with anything comparative. We wanna capture the worst time, the worst period, the worst week, analyze it, and see where we have defects in the system to fix them. Going to any other time where we'd have lesser traffic would make more sense, just like going to the doctor for a heart stress test and telling the doctor, well, I want you to take my heart only to 50% of its capacity and stop. That doesn't work. You wanna see the system under stress, under the most stress, so you identify the issues and you address them.
But how does that tell us anything about Maple Street? It's done only when Maple Street's closed.
It tells us if the system works or not, that's what it tells us. And I could tell you now, and I gave that example to council members before, I can predict if you do it during times where Maple Street is open, let's say the wintertime, I could tell you now, you're gonna have all these delays, less by two, three seconds, one second. So what are you gonna do with these numbers? Nothing. We want to go to the most stressed period, analyze it, find the defects, and address them, and that's what we did.
What's the purpose of the pedestrian mall statute that we're gonna have to rely on in order to close Maple Street?
That's, that's just the statute in Title 40 of the New Jersey statutes. It says that any municipality has the prerogative of creating a pedestrian mall, and it gives you the procedure to follow to achieve that closure, what you have to do, what you need to submit to achieve the closure.
But isn't it a safety-driven statute?
Actually...
No, it's not, actually.
It's an economic, it's an economically-driven statute.
If you look at the legislative findings, it talks, it's really, it's for special improvement districts to increase the economies of downtowns. It was, it was actually designed to, I think, combat the malls back in the late 70s and 80s, where downtowns are being blighted because everyone, all the stores go into the malls. So legislature passed a special improvement district legislation, which is, it's in Title 40, and it, there's a number of subsections in it, but it actually talks about, about the, the economic purpose to drive businesses, or folks to downtowns in urban centers. So that's, that was the main purpose of it. Part of that, contained in that statute, is the ability to create the pedestrian mall, which, as I said, it's arduous because you do have to have a traffic study, you have to go to DOT, they ask questions, I mean, it, it's not something you can just do on a whim. But that's one aspect of the whole special improvement district legislation.
So is this study designed to answer some of the questions that you have to answer in order to implement a pedestrian mall?
I, I didn't, I didn't ask for the study. The, the study, I think, was done by SDI, and I'll let them do it.
This study was just to ask the level of service, if, if closing Maple Street to vehicles was causing any backups or anything, and that's what he was talking about, the level of service. So we didn't ask for anything in connection with the special improvement district legislation or pedestrian mall.
Why didn't...
Mr. Palowski, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, because there are other people waiting.
You guys mind?
No, that's not the option. You're not, you don't get to take a poll.
Yeah. You have three minutes.
You're way, you've blown way past your three minutes, and you got, you've gotten answers, but just last question, okay?
Why didn't we look at Morris Ave? Intersection of Morris Ave and Springfield?
That wasn't part of the study, because Summit Downtown doesn't have anything to do with Morris Ave. It's not part of our district.
We're looking at the effects of traffic when Maple Street is closed, having that impact.
Because we're, we were concerned about how traffic was circulating downtown, where they were going, so they're going, if they can't go up Maple Street, they're going a block this way to Beechwood and coming on Union Place. So the study results showed that there was no increase in congestion around the, the circle at Union Place and Beechwood, and the only one that was problematic is the one that's problematic regardless of Maple being open or closed.
I can tell you from my own personal experience for months, that Morris Ave and Springfield...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palowski.
You're welcome.
Beth Welsh, Summit resident, more or less since 1960, I was in school with your brother, and manager of Bassett Associates for almost the last 30 years. I've spent the last 30 years thinking about what makes our downtown tick. In fact, I'm glad you liked Girls Night Out, that was my idea when I was on the SDI board. But even that, we had to rein it in, because it was a great idea to get things started, it was a temporary thing, and it, you know, we moved along. And I think a lot about how things operate in this town, and one of the big concerns I have, and I'm not against closing, I'm not against closing the outdoor dining, as it's been said before, schools in, chairs in, schools out, chairs out, you know, whatever. That's late, it's almost 11:00. But, living on the side of town that I live on, it's very easy to think, I'll go to New Providence. And the harder you make it, and we're now making it harder to park for a long time on, on Union Place, so I need to get to the deforests, if I live on Brayton School District, Franklin School, Little Wolf Road, and you're already almost out of town. And, you know, again, in the summertime, it's been said, there's a lot less traffic, it's a lot easier going, you're not trying to get one kid to one soccer field and one to dance class, and, you know, oh my God, I forgot, and you get stuck at Union Place and Summit Avenue because you forgot, but you can't get through Maple Street this time. I think we just have to be really careful. Yes, we talk about, our town is very special, and we have some quirky things, like a roundabout. You'd probably never build one like that today, but it works in our little town. You would never build Franklin Place, Union Place, the way it is today, and I can remember when there was a gas station there and a whole bunch of other things. But it, it sort of works, as long as we don't put too much pressure. And I find that when you close Maple Street, you put too much pressure on that inside. And, and we need another traffic light downtown? I mean, it's all these increment, it's the incremental little things that create the law of unintended consequences, that nobody, nobody says, oh, well, actually, you can, you can find a lot of people that say they don't come to Summit anymore, they go to New Providence. So I just ask you to be very careful about what you do. The big, bold strikes look great, but they have big, bold consequences. And that's what I would just ask you all to think. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. So for the 2022 season, did we apply to the Department of Transportation for road closure?
I think that's a question for Mr. Schreger.
Did we apply?
Why don't you just let him answer the question?
Sure. Stop the call.
The process we followed, excuse me, was we declared a pedestrian mall.
But was that before or after you applied for a closure through the Department of Transportation?
We, we had started the application through a, I believe it's a minor impact, a minor access permit, and at that time, we founder were advised we could go the pedestrian mall route, so that is the route we went.
Thank you. So who advised on that?
DOT themselves.
So what was the reason for a May 1 to October 15 closure? Because we keep hearing seasonal, but that actually is three seasons, right? Like you have spring, all the summer, and a little bit of fall, so I too, I'm in favor of a closure of July and August, so what's the data to support a May 1 to 10/15 closure?
Well, it's, you know, from around May to October is, is when people like to be outside, and quite frankly, it's to give you a competitive edge over other towns that are, that are doing this. Because there are towns that are doing this just July and August, and this is something that people like, and so if they know that May, if they know that Summit is a place that you can do this at a time when people want to do this, they're gonna be more likely to go to Summit.
So who are the towns that are doing it only in July and August? And who are the towns that are doing it from May to October?
Well, I'm trying to think, the, I think Westfield does it in the summer, Hoboken does it in, Milburn, did you say?
Red Bank is seasonal in summer.
Red, Red Bank is, Red Bank is seasonal in summer, and as I said, Somerville decided to, to do this permanently. Jersey City in 2019. Jersey City decided to take a part of Newark Avenue and make it permanent, so this is about being on top of it.
So this will give us a competitive advantage over Jersey City?
It's, well, it's not a competitive advantage over Jersey City, it's a competitive advantage over communities that are like yours, like Westfield, and other, other communities that are doing, and I can, you know, this is, like I said before, this is like farmers' markets. More pay, more towns are gonna be doing this, so if you can be...
The farmers' markets don't push traffic to two streets.
Right.
And then, so are we gonna actually see your full presentation and your full traffic study? Because there is one slide, but we don't know for the six intersections. All except one have Cs, one has an F, so do we know the wait time at those intersections?
We do.
We do, so you're gonna send them, and they'll be uploaded to the website, so everybody could take a look?
That's up to the town what to do with the information, but the study is...
I would hope they would share it.
And I'll share them.
Yeah, okay. Great. So I think that, before any decisions made on any type of closure, I think we have to do a bit more information finding and look at the data, and I think data needs to really be essential to the decisions that you make, that impact this town in a major way, so we can avoid these big sweeping issues. So I'm looking forward to seeing both complete presentations.
Hi, my name is Bruce Lerkoff, I'm the owner of 26 Maple Street in Summit. Before you start the eight timer, I got a couple of questions. You started this out by asking whether or not we had questions to ask these people who did the surveys, et cetera, who did the presentation tonight. And as they were going through the presentation, I started writing down questions, and, you know, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I still want to give my original presentation, but I think some of these questions should be answered by the, the people who did the presentation, because maybe a lot of us have the same questions. So if I may, let me just ask a few of the questions first, before my presentation.
Sir, what kind of presentation are you giving?
Well, I, I had a prepared...
No, yeah, okay, well, you can choose, but, you know, this isn't the only meeting where we're doing this, and there are other people waiting, so I'd ask you to, to choose which one you want to do. We're not doing both.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, was it, was a survey done, since the governor extended this for a year? Was a survey done about the occupancy on the outside, and then going inside the, the establishment to see what the, the occupancy was inside? Because I can tell you that, that there's, really isn't a need for the outdoor dining, because if you go inside a restaurant, and they have almost the complete restaurant that's, that's vacant, at least during lunchtime, and outside, you may have five people, you know, 10 people, 15 people, but the inside can handle 100 people. So, you know, I mean, the, the need really isn't there, you're trying to say this is an amenity that maybe the town should consider, am I right?
Well, I'm saying, from the survey, from, people said this is what they like.
Yeah, well, okay.
It's about, it's about market demand.
Okay, I'm, I'm an owner.
Okay.
You said, you tried to interview the landlords. I was, I was not interviewed, I was not approached, and you tell me why of the 200, maybe the 100 landlords in town, why weren't they all included? Because your traffics, your traffic problem on Maple Street, closing Maple Street, has caused a problem throughout the entire town. It, it causes double and triple parking, with people trying to unload their stuff, the suppliers, et cetera, et cetera, and that causes your 10 seconds, your 15 seconds, you can spend a minute behind a truck. And it also causes a big pedestrian problem, because a lot of times, they're forced to park at an area where they can't see somebody walking a car coming, because they gotta go around a, a truck that's parked there offloading merchandise. It causes a real problem, and you should, everybody, the owners in town made Summit, they invested tens of millions of dollars for their property and to maintain their properties. And you're trying to, and you're trying to make it sound like it's, it's the residents or the people of town that should make a decision. Well, I, I, there was sweat and blood and tears of all of us. You know, you talk about the residents and the pandemic, and the problems with the retailers, having to, you know, try to, try to get more business, and that's why a lot of this stuff was done. Whether the retailers all received PP, I think it was PPE or whatever it is, from the government, you know, they, the landlords made concessions to them, you know, where sometimes they didn't have enough money to pay the real estate taxes. The town, other towns gave the landlords some lenience, maybe told them they could pay it a month later. This town did not, okay? So, the biggest, the biggest problem, and, and the people that bore the most during this pandemic were the owners, and you people have just turned your backs on them, and that shouldn't be.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I'm sorry I can't speak to, to, to what happened there. All I can tell you is what we saw in the surveys. This is what people, this is what Summit residents are, are saying they want.
What, what residents say they want? What about the people who invested the dollars? Why are you trying to take our property rights away?
I don't think anybody's trying to take anybody's property rights away.
You don't think it's harder to pay a possibly rent and find a new, new tenant to release your space?
Mr. Lerkoff, I think, I think this is not a productive line of, you've, you've made your point. If you have questions, ask your questions, and please move on, because there are other folks lined up behind you.
Okay, all right. The, the survey, how many, did you do a survey, did you, the timing that this town put on it was April, when did it start, April 15th this year? April 1st, wasn't it?
May 12th.
When was it?
May 12th.
May 1st this year, or was it April?
5th, May 5th.
May 5th, okay, and then it went all the way to October, the end of October, right?
November 1st.
Or November 1st?
November 1st.
I mean, that's way too long. You want to talk seasonal, you talk, you talk maybe middle of May, end of May, and then you, you quit it around the 15th of September, after Labor Day. That's more than enough time for, for people, you, you look outside, and how many days do you think the outdoor is actually utilized? Was there a study done on that? Taken into account weather, where people couldn't be outside? Snow, last year, you had snow in November, I'm, I'm pretty sure at the end, it went to the end of November, where you could have had a snowstorm during the same period, two chairs out there and a, and a heater, closing down Maple Street? I mean, I think some common sense has to go into this decision. If you're gonna make a seasonal type of situation, let's make it reasonable, common sense-wise. Don't start at May 1st or May 15th, do it when the kids are just about getting ready to go out of school. Maple Street is a, is a, is a, is a thoroughfare that should be open all the time. If you're gonna close it, use a minimal amount of time, and, and do whatever you want to do. But I know, what about second-floor apartments? Did you survey those to see whether or not it, the noise outside affects them upstairs? Does it make it more difficult for them, for landlord, or for them to live in that apartment?
I mean, there were, there were some concerns about noise and, and litter, yeah, that could be the matter.
I would imagine, a person with a two-year-old kid, trying to put the kid to sleep where he's sick, and you got, you got the bands playing outside.
Mr. Lerkoff, I think you need to wrap up, there are folks waiting, you've gone way over your time. Please ask your last question.
What about after hours? What, what happens after hours? I know they have this problem in New York City, you're talking Jersey City, let's talk New York City. After hours, they have problems policing the outdoor space. You got vermin there, you got, you got people doing drugs there, you got, you got homeless people sleeping there. Does it, does it increase the security that has to be done by closing these, these streets off and making a mall for a period of time?
Well, I mean, I can't speak to, to New York City, I know there, there have been some areas with, with some issues. Certainly, that, that's, you know, code enforcement, that's management of... Um, certainly that, that's, you know, code enforcement, that's management of, of the space itself, that you could work with the local businesses to, to address that. So, uh, you know, the police as part of their, as, as, as part of their rounds.
I'm just saying, these are part of the problems that I don't think, I don't think what was done as far as the SDI and whatever studies they did were thorough enough. I don't think they answered some of the questions. You can't do a traffic study when you have a closed road that's closed, uh.
Okay, Mr. Lerkoff, this is enough now, please.
No, I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions that I don't think we're getting.
Okay, and you've, you've asked a lot of questions and other people also have questions. So please let the next person go.
And, you know, may I say that we have a lot to talk about and a lot more to do. So this is just the very first conversation.
Good evening.
Hi, Allison Chievo, 34 Laurel Avenue. Um, the biggest problem I found with all of this is that a survey is, the, the survey was flawed, um, from the very start. Um, one, I'm not really sure where you got the mailing list on who got, who, who received the survey. I received it because I subscribed to the downtown, um, some downtown newsletter. Was the town's, um, email list also used? Because if it was, would they merge so that I wouldn't receive two surveys? Um, just wanted to know, because I know plenty of people that never saw, received the survey. Um, two, those of us that did receive the survey would, were laughing at the questions, the questions, some of the questions, and I don't have them right in front of me, but you had questions that asked, how many times a day do you drive down Maple Street? At this point in time when the survey, when we answered the survey, Maple Street had been closed for four months, so you can't even answer that question properly. Another question was asked, and do you like eating outside? Okay, yes. Another one was the seasonal closure. Well, this council has always said that that was a seasonal closure. The March to November was a seasonal closure. Well, just like Rachel was saying, what's the season? I mean, there's four seasons in the, in the year. So basically, you took the data from a flawed survey, regurgitated it, and came up with flawed results. So basically garbage in, garbage out. So I think this whole thing has to start all over again. We have to have a survey that makes sense, that has questions, that are actually asking the proper questions. Um, why people act out of Summit where even asked those questions? I don't know. Why every single business owner in town, building owner, landlord did not receive the survey? I don't know. And for you, both of you, do you guys live anywhere near Summit? Do you have, like, have you ever been to Summit before this traffic story, study?
I did explain.
Sir, you have to talk into the microphone, otherwise no one at home can hear.
Yes.
Okay, so you've been to Summit more than just the last two blocks?
I think you maybe missed when he said that he's been here many times over many years.
Okay, okay. Um, just didn't, it just, it's just not coming out like that. It just seems like they're not very familiar with our town. Um, I'm just, I just want to say, like I said, everything seems very flawed, the, the survey, nothing, nothing makes sense. I think you need to start over from scratch if you really want to have a real, a good, um, discussion on whether or not, what, what's the right thing to do.
Well, can, can I just address the facts here?
Sure.
We, we did not ask people, how many times do you drive on Maple Street? We asked people have, do you drive on Maple Street? Now, obviously you don't drive when it's clo, when it's not, when it's car free, but we wanted to ask people and find out people's experience of Maple Street. And we did not ask, we did not ask, do you enjoy eating outside?
Can you tell me, can you read the exact question that was asked?
Sure. Yeah.
This will be in your report as well, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the questions are, the questions are in there. Um, so yeah, you know, if, if those were the questions, those would be bad questions, but those weren't the questions. Um, so, uh, are you a homeowner, a renter, a visitor? Do you work downtown? Do you live within walking distance? How long have you lived here? How often do you go into downtown? Not on Maple Street, but into downtown? What would make you more likely to go into downtown, more, to go to downtown more often?
But these are multiple choice questions, correct? Yeah, so it had to be a survey, because that's what it says.
There were, there were some open-ended questions and there were some, some multiple choice questions. Um, how, how often do you go to Maple Street downtown?
And what were the, what were the?
Could you please let him finish reading them?
How often do you, yeah. Um, what did you think about it being pedestrian only? Open-ended question, what made you feel that way? And then the, the, and then in terms of the multiple choice questions, is how often should this portion of Maple Street in downtown Summit be pedestrian only? And then the answers were always, only seasonally, only on weekends, only for special events, or never. And then we also asked, is there anything else you want to, to tell us?
Well, yeah, like I said, like seasonally, it doesn't make any sense to have that listed. Did you say, you know, one?
Seasonally, yeah.
Seasonally, what's seasonally mean?
Yeah, so the, the season, in terms of the, the, the length of the season, that would be determined by, by programming, so it's, that's.
But I'm, but I'm answering the survey, I don't know that, I don't know.
Right, but if there's a, if there's an area where you can say anything else, you could say, you could define your season if you wanted to.
So you, so you gathered all that, of those other comments? That's sort of, my, my point is that it didn't, that the choices were not, did not make sense. How many times a day do you go to Maple Street? Well, on Mondays, I go four times, on Saturdays, I go to, it was so, the, the survey was not a very good survey. And I'm, I'm not the only person that feels this way in this town. And we've talked about, like I said, it, I can go through those questions and they don't make sense. There's not a right answer. They don't make sense. I couldn't answer the right question. How do I answer, how many days, how many times do I go to Maple Street? Like I said, what day? What day of the week? What month? What, which, which season?
We didn't ask how many times you go to, how many times a day you go to Maple Street.
What'd you say? What would you, what'd you say?
What, the, the, the question, well, it's not how many times a day, but how often do you go to Maple Street?
Okay, there you go.
How, how often, not how many times a day.
But that's what I'm saying is, what's the answer to that? How often?
And I think the, um, and I think that was a multiple choice question that it could have been every day, weekends only, uh, only a few times a year, so it was those, those questions.
So in certain months I go there every day, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying is that they were, they were, the questions were not good questions. And that's my point is.
I think you've made your point. Um, if you have other questions, you can ask them, but you've, we've been over this. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Or is it good morning?
Almost, almost morning.
It's almost morning.
My name is Gil Orman, and I've lived in Summit, except for college and the Marine Corps. Tomorrow is Perth, Perth, uh, big day, December 7th, Pearl Harbor. And, um, I've had a business downtown for over 50 years. I'm a lawyer, don't hold that against me. And a building owner, a landlord, and a tenant. And I'm right in, on Beechwood Road, and I can tell you one thing. Study has to be done. Not when it's closed, when it's open. When it's closed, Union Place is gridlock. Gridlock. I'm there 12 hours a day and it's unbelievable when it's closed, Maple Street. Mr. Schreger and the attorney both said that to have this, you have to have the approval from the DOT. To get approval, you have, the one method which was recommended was a pedestrian mall. As a lawyer, I looked that up and there is a statute. The statute is NJSA 40:56-67. And what it does, in order to get approved as a pedestrian mall, the next ordinance says, findings necessary for adoption of the ordinance. That's what the findings that you have to make in order to, to, to have a pedestrian mall approved. One, I'm quoting from 40:56-68. Reasonably convenient alternate routes to other parts of Summit exist for private vehicles. Please note. Maple Street is a main artery. It's not a side street. There are two main arteries to get to Summit downtown. Maple Street and Summit Avenue. That's it. This isn't a little street that isn't used. It's a main artery. Number two. Continued unlimited use of Maple Street or part thereof by private vehicles may constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians. Can anybody say that with a straight face? I don't think so. I don't think so. Maple Street has been a main thoroughfare for over 100 years. It's not a hazard, it's a benefit. Three, budding property owners can reasonably and adequately be provided with emergency vehicle services and receive and deliver merchandise and materials from other streets and alleys. Why should those businesses that are not there have deliveries for them on Union Place or another place? It's ridiculous. And they have deliveries. It is in the best, four. It is in the best interest of Summit and the public and of benefit adjacent properties to use Maple Street primarily for pedestrian purposes. And that pedestrian use is determined to be the highest and best use of Maple Street. It isn't. This, it's over. It's, we're returning to normalcy. The best use of Maple Street is as one of two main arteries to downtown. And unless I have not, not made it clear, I am not in favor of closing it at all. And I don't think you can close it for a, a season without getting the approval of a pedestrian mall. And I'll just re, repeat this and sit down. Continued unlimited use of Maple Street or part thereof by private vehicles may constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians. Nobody can make that finding, nobody. And as a result, I think there would be a, a legal problem here with trying to, to close it at any time. And if the study's done, it should be done when there's activity here.
Thank you, Mr. Orman.
Thank you.
Come on up. Good evening.
Marilyn Falls, 118 Prospect Street. I just want to insert a historical note. In the early 1900s, when the railroad station came to Summit, it originally was going to be, and was up ground, and they dropped it to, to under grade level. And the reason being is there was a north and south summit. And the concept was to have no line, no Mason Dixon line between north and south, and to have easy access to both sides of town. And that was a very important decision they made, and it cost a lot of money for the town. And I think closing Maple Street sort of negates that concept.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. Um, Lori Doll from Morris Avenue. I'm just trying to understand how we are where we are right now. I'm in real estate, I've been selling real estate in Summit for 35 years. Clients come in and you see the same thing. I have sold them houses in Summit, in Westfield, in Maplewood, in Morristown. And every family that buys in whichever town is looking for something that fits their lifestyle. The people, the people that choose to live in Summit, live in Summit, they don't want to live in Maplewood, they didn't choose Maplewood, they didn't choose Morristown, they didn't choose Westfield. I keep hearing urban, urban, urban. Summit is suburban, and people come to Summit because they are suburban. Summit has gotten a great reputation over the past couple of years, the downtowns, because of our high-end restaurants. I love them, I support them. Summit House, Roots, we have clients, you want to celebrate, you give them a Roots certificate, you take them, you go to Summit House. You want a burger, you go down to Winbury's. So now, this all came about with Maple Street, not because people were talking that they wanted a place to gather. We have the Summit Green. People aren't going to come to Maple Street to look at art or to draw in the street or to do activities. This all came about because from the pandemic, we had restaurants. You're eating, you're drinking, the lights are there, you're having a great time. So now we're talking, so the question came up, could we keep Maple Street open? I believe that it was because we wanted to continue to eat and drink and have a good time, not necessarily look at art or places to go or things to do. So now, if we're not talking about having it opened full-time, but we're talking about part-time and discussing what would part-time be, the restaurants that originally wanted this to be opened all the time, are they still interested in a two-month opening? Or, I mean, are we having this whole big discussion for, for what? Because we had a, I don't feel that the survey gave the questions the answers that we were looking for. I think your survey did great. I don't think that you were given the guidance to search the answers that we needed to make this decision. We're not looking for a place, or it was not the intent, to, to have a street where we could all gather and hang out and do different things. I think we were talking about eating and drinking on the street, and that's what people love. We have so many events that happen over at the Village Green, with adults, with children, with music, with everything, two blocks away. So I, I think going back and understanding, why are we talking Maple Street? Don't skirt around the issue. I mean, I, I love all of the merchants in town, I love the restaurants, I'm here eating and drinking all the time, everybody knows that. The question has to go, and you didn't know this or you weren't instructed, if you talk to the people on Maple Street and right around, for the restaurants that eat and drink on the street are Maple Street. So now, you're talking to a couple more people and a couple other people. I think the whole town, anybody that pays their, into the SDI should have a say in what happens with the downtown. When we, I've been on SDI for eight years. Whenever we talked about having the Summit Street Fair, and we had this conversation every year, let's have it, let's not have it, let's have it, let's not have it. What people are they bringing to town? We're looking at activities that people are bringing to town, and it's always on a Sunday because a lot of the merchants are closed, so it's interfering with their business less. It's not bringing people into town because they're going to run in and, and shop and do things. So it's just, I, I don't have any questions. I'm just sort of summarizing where we started from, where we seem to be going, but I don't think that where we're going is going to resolve the initial request. And what do, what do we want to happen there?
Thank you for your comment.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'll make it quick. I think everybody covered, uh, a lot of the stuff. I agree with most of, of what was said, and just said, actually just previous to myself. Um, I'm against the, uh, the permanent closure and I'd be more lenient towards the two months, if anything. But, um, I had, I saw a lot of flaws with the study today. Um, I don't think we have enough information, um, but I do have one, just one specific question. Was the traffic study contingent upon adding a traffic light in order to make this, like, traffic feasible? I didn't catch like the full traffic light versus cutting down on time. Is that something that we need to do or would it wouldn't pass the test?
No.
So then why do we talk about the traffic light for so long?
Can I, um, go ahead? I've been on the safety committee for seven years, and that intersection has been a source of. a source of consternation and not, and we've tried several different things to try to make that a safer intersection. So it's been a problem for a long time. So that's to his point you were just saying.
That's the reason, just to bring up the history of the.
Pardon me?
The history of the traffic and a need for a light.
It's been a bad intersection for years, which is what the gentleman was saying.
Okay. I thought he was suggesting that we add a traffic light, and some other commenter also spoke about adding a traffic light.
He said, he said he thought that it would help the existing problem, existing, pre-existing. That's all. And who knows if that's what we should do? We're not there yet. This is conversation number one.
Right. So I was just asking to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi there. Rose Marie Zadi, Shumpike Road in Summit. Who did you survey? I'm a lifelong resident of Summit. I didn't receive your survey. Who makes up the 1,400 people? Is it 50% Summit taxpayer or 5% Summit taxpayer? If you didn't have, if you don't have a representative sample of Summit, the survey is biased. Why, I mean, I don't even, I heard about the survey. Somebody sent me a link. I don't go online. I had said to the mayor, when she first was running, that people that don't go online need to be informed about what's happening in our town. And we're not. So your survey I did not receive. Why?
Well, I can't speak to the distribution, but I can tell you that 87% of the respondents were Summit residents.
Summit residents. About Summit taxpayers, you know, people who, you know. Also, you know, Summit residents, there's young renters. Yes. That are supporting our town. But why? Where, where did you send this out to? Who was sent the? Who was sent the survey?
The survey was sent to email list, Summit Downtown's email list of over 4,000, or is it 6,000? I can't remember. My assistant would know that. But it also was hard copy at the clerk's office and at the public library.
But why wasn't it sent to all of us?
We just didn't have the funds to do a mass mailing.
There could have been a little postcard that was sent out that said, this survey is going to be done. Go online or go on our website.
Well, it was also in, aside from the.
We don't, I don't.
Okay, I'm telling you where it was. It was in Tap into Summit and also Patch through a press release with a link, and it was on the Summit Downtown website.
I know. But older people like myself.
That's why we had hard copies at the lobby and we, I mean, at the library and the City Hall.
Why wasn't a postcard sent out by the city? Small postcard.
You know what that's about? That's still a big amount of money to send a postcard to every house.
We were not online, everything about Broad Street West and everything about this online, right? When all of a sudden I was able to get a shiny postcard that told me about recycling that was sent by the city of Summit. How come we're not informed? Why was a, a postcard sent out about recycling and the change of people, the change of recyclers, but we can't get a postcard that says, we're gonna, we might close Maple Street? And I'm not to say you had to send out something that we had to fill out. We could have gone online or there's a website, people could have chose to do it. It just seems very flawed that you only send out, saying, why was the recycling thing sent? Big shiny postcard.
I'll tell you why. Well, it wasn't that big like this, but whatever. Because probably the single biggest complaint people have is when we change recyclers. We get hundreds of phone calls if they, if they're, I mean, if they're not notified in advance. So we thought, okay, this way we're going to make sure it goes everywhere and not just to people that go online. Now, if we sent a postcard with a link for you to fill out the survey online, how does that help the people that don't go online?
Their neighbor or somebody else to approach them with it and say, look what, look what's happening.
Right.
I mean, online, that's how no one knew about Broad Street West. Online is a mistake. For the older people. And I asked you that. Back when you were running for mayor, I said, we needed, the older people need something else. I have a 92-year-old aunt who would have appreciated knowing. She doesn't want Maple Street. I don't want, I don't want indoor, I mean, outdoor dining on Maple Street, and I don't want the parklets. I want our parking spaces back. If the people have room on the sidewalk, two half-tables, fine.
Okay, thank you.
So just two, two quick things. The first is that the city did not send out this survey because this was SDI's survey, right? So we, we, just a reminder about what Council President outlined very clearly at the beginning, which was that this is SDI pitching the council and the community right now, right? This is not the city pitching the community on a plan that we've already come up with, right? We're hearing this for the first time with everybody tonight, and I think we have a lot to think about and digest. The other thing is, we have, we are very lucky to have so many people who are so engaged in the process. There are people here who are telling us their thoughts right now, and there were almost 1,400 people who filled out this survey. What I think we want to try to stay away from, however, though, is the idea that some people's opinion about it is more or less important than others. And I'm talking specifically about people who are renters. I think that's, that's something that we were just touching on and something that comes up quite frequently. But 25% of this community is renters, and we should not discount what one quarter of our community thinks about this community. So I want to just.
And renters do pay taxes as well.
Of course, of course, of course. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out those couple things. Thank you.
Come on up, Ms. Gagman.
Hello again.
Hello.
Okay. A couple of questions for you as an engineer. Were you the original engineer that was supposed to be here tonight? Were you filling in? I had a hard time hearing you in the background.
The engineer.
Come on up, sir.
The engineer who did the study works under my direction.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. The survey, I have to agree with Ms. Chievo back there, completely flawed. I read it. I was blown away. I thought my 14-year-old did it. 1,300, sorry to offend you, but 1,300 residents responded. There's 22,000 residents here. I got more residents to respond to my Broad Street West petition. I mean, 1,300 residents, that's, that's, that's not enough to say that you're going to close an entire street down for three seasons almost. I'm sorry. That's like 16% of the total number of residents here in the city. And you're saying that it slows traffic down. I'm sorry. I live on one side of the, of the city, and I have to go to the other side three times in one morning, six times in the total day, just to pick up kids. We had a fatality. I don't know if you're aware of that, on the other side of town this year. We had three pedestrians hit, okay? And I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but traffic is a nightmare. So you're giving me a traffic study that's saying, you know, these intersections are okay, one's an F. They're all an F, in my opinion. I mean, I'm, everyone's honking their horns. Kids are crossing the street like they don't know what's doing. Everyone's on their phone. No one's paying attention. When Maple Street's closed all the time, it's, it's creating havoc on the other streets. So it's a nightmare. So sending out to only 1,300 residents when nobody else, like she doesn't know what's going on, that's not acceptable. I'm sorry, but this, this whole thing is skewed. I would like to understand, the traffic study needs to be posted because that's really important for Broad Street West to understand when we're doing that, how it's going to play a factor into everything else. So I'd really appreciate if the city would post that as well. I would also, from Ms. Adams, like to understand if the members, board members of SDI were given this presentation prior to tonight? No, nobody was? Because all the other boards I'm on usually are given presentations to understand what's going on prior to something as big as this. So I would like to understand the rationale behind that.
Can you step up? Sorry. It's just no one can hear you at home.
Because this seems to be a hot-button issue and is an important issue, we didn't want to put any of the board members in any kind of awkward position of knowing something before it was officially presented.
Okay. I would also like to understand that, doing my own research, that you're from Maplewood, and I believe you're from Maplewood as well. Is that true? So there's, there seems a little, you know, we can call a spade a spade, but it seems like a lot of people know each other. And I feel like some of these studies and these traffic studies and stuff are often flawed. Like people talk to each other behind closed doors, and it's like, say what it is, do what it is. We have some open requests where people are saying, please do this, I'll do it for you, do this. And it's like, you know, we've made recommendations, widen the sidewalks, do some things to get some outdoor dining, but I don't really think that whole trust thing that I was talking about before, that we really know where to go anymore. Because this 1,300 residents and listening to this presentation, I think we're all kind of like scratching our heads, saying, what? It, it doesn't make sense. So, you know, I, I think you have to go back to the, what we talked about before, maybe widening the sidewalks or looking at alternatives, or listening to the residents that are coming here. And who really wants this, you know, even for that length of time? We're talking about some, you know, couple months, but that length of time, or even talking about widening the sidewalks. I'd love to hear what Mr. Schreger would like to hear about that option my husband gave about widening the sidewalks. Increasing the revenue for the city would be a great option. I mean, you guys, nobody came back with that, you know, that discussion that my husband gave. Something like that would be a great idea. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to address widening the sidewalks? Because we've had conversations, and it's a pretty spendy option, I think. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's true. Excuse me, Council President. We did take a quick look. Maple Street on the south side is 32 feet wide. So if you were to expand the sidewalks, and you would lose nine parking spaces immediately, and you would be able to gain six feet of sidewalk. Now, you put it on the east side or the west side, I mean, that would have to be figured out, but you're looking at a cost of about, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 to do so. But you also have the trees that are now, and light poles that are currently up against the existing curb. So if you're going to put it on one side, you're not going to gain so much space if you keep the trees where they are, unless you push them out with the new curb line, which could be done, but just adds to cost. So, so in short, it is something possible. It is very costly, and you might not gain that much, and you would lose the nine parking spaces, at least on the south side.
And would you still have space for traffic to go both ways?
You would still have two ways, but if you have, and there's a lot of, there is no loading zone on Maple, and while I certainly appreciate, understand a lot of trucks do that, if that was to happen now and you shrunk it anymore, when a truck stops, like Maple Street would be just dead. So you would, you would take away. Now it's able to exist when it is open with trucks pulled over to the side to get by. If you took away that, you know, six feet or more, you would, you would be a very tight two-lane road.
Okay, thank you.
Council President, I just want to ask Director Schreger really quick, because how much parking would we lose then if we closed the entire street? And what's the cost of closing an entire street? Because we would lose that.
I don't think I understand the question.
Well, he said that if we extended the sidewalks, we would lose nine parking spots, and it would be about $85,000. It would cost us $85,000 to widen those sidewalks. So what, how much parking do we lose if we close this street entirely? And what does it cost us to close it? Because there's going to have to be improvements to that street. And who incurs those costs either way? SDI or the city?
Let me just make sure I understand. So you mean, close it permanently? Or like do a permanent closure, or just like we've done in the past, the temporary closure?
So part A, if we extend the sidewalk, we lose nine spots, and it costs us $85,000. So if we closed it permanently, how many parking spots would we lose and what would it cost?
I haven't done anything formal, but you could assume.
Six, right?
Yeah, you would probably be able to keep the three that are south of its your garage entrance. So you'd probably lose the six within there. The cost then is a function of what do you, you want to do? Do you want to raise the whole street level up to the existing sidewalk? You can just keep it as is, and it would be less expensive. But if you do raise it, now you're going to have to have drainage. So it would, it depends on what you do, really, so. But, but if you close it permanently, just in that stretch, you would lose the six spaces indefinitely forever. And what cost would be, to be determined depending on what, how you want to look in the final condition.
And I just wanted to clarify, I don't know if, and I could be wrong, but I don't know if people are saying renters shouldn't be a part of our survey, and I could be wrong. So maybe I misheard. But what I'm hearing people say is that they feel residents, whether you're a renter or an owner, should be more valuable or weigh heavier than a survey from an out-of-towner. That's what I, what I'm hearing.
I thought she said taxpayers. She said taxpayers. And, and all, and 80, and the majority of the people who were surveyed were residents, not, not out-of-towners. There were, can you tell us the numbers?
87, 87% were residents, yeah.
Right, okay, thank you.
Resident of taxpayers or renters? I mean, we didn't call it.
We don't make that distinction.
My point is that we shouldn't make.
Residents are renters.
Residents are renters or owners. Anyone is a resident.
Right, but we shouldn't make the distinction between residents and taxpayers, is what I'm saying, right?
But I would say that that's, I'm sorry, just, this isn't important, because I don't want to feel like we're saying that renters don't matter. You're saying residents, when you, that high percentage of residents, you're saying that, did you distinguish between them being renters versus?
We, we did ask, we did ask them whether they owned a home or whether they rented their home in, at Summit. I don't have that, I don't have the breakdown right now.
Why would it matter? I'm just curious.
It was just, it was just, you know, it was, we just wanted to get a better understanding of who was, who was responding to the, to the, to the survey.
But you didn't treat that data any differently, whether they were renters or?
No, 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 no. Residents.
No, sit down. No, we're not doing that. Sit down. It's not your turn. There's someone else waiting. Okay, come on up, Mr. McGoy. Thank you, Council President.
Sorry. It seems like we often just lack a lot of common sense. When we look at Summit, like we've said before, other people made the points I was going to make, let everybody else talk before I say anything, but to act like Maple Street is not an important thoroughfare is nuts. I live on the other side, and every time, I, I live on the north side, every time I need to go over to the south side, I now have to either go all the way to Morris Avenue, which is worse, or go over to Forest Avenue and down Summit Avenue, which is horrible. I mean, all of these streets are so congested now, it makes no sense to cut off one of the major thoroughfares through the town. Like, I understand everybody wants an outdoor walking mall like Pearl Street or Santa Monica or Hip and that, whatever. And these were great things that we had during COVID. This was something that allowed the Summit House to stay open. I don't think they need it anymore to stay open. But our lives behaved very differently then. We weren't driving around. I was riding my bike with my daughter down the middle of streets. Nobody was driving around. We're now going back to normal. And this is unfortunately a very important street. And closing it really only benefits Finn, Fiorino's, Summit House. What other businesses does it benefit? It doesn't, Roots, right, that's four. I was, she shook her, the mayor was shaking her head, so I wanted to understand what other businesses are really served by it. From my understanding, the retail establishments around them are hurting because they don't get, people can't drive by or drive through, and I know it's illegal to drop people off, but let's be serious. And then you also now see a lot of, you do see when that street's closed, you see a lot of big trucks right on the corner there on Springfield Avenue delivering stuff to those places. So it just, it bottles things up more. I mean, the traffic study, I would think by definition, when you would want to understand the impact of this, you would need to study it when the street is closed compared to when the street is open and how it affects the other arteries. The idea that you're just, I don't understand the value of a traffic study that doesn't compare the two. And I think Jamie, her common sense made her ask the question, well, what's the point of seeing a traffic study? We're talking about closing this street. But I just think that, like, I, I don't know. I mean, it seems like you can have a survey or whatever. Yeah, I like dining outside. And to be honest with you, before I even thought about this much, when people complained about it originally, I was like, oh, I like it, you know? And that's the thing, that's a knee-jerk. I like it. But when I really look about how it impacts my life, it does. And it's really the people, you really need to study it. It's people who are dropping their kids off, I think, of the most impact to the middle school. And all of this stuff affects safety, everything else. I mean, we have to understand what we're dealing with with Summit. We don't have wide streets. We're getting more and more congestion. I know that when we were on the master planner examination and we studied that, one of the things everybody wanted to do is bike, put bike lanes. And that would be great, like conceptually, it's a great idea, but we don't, our streets aren't wide enough. So we have to work with what we're dealing with. And what we're dealing with is a small town with major congestion issues, with two main[1780.79] with two main arteries that go through the center of town. Closing one of them is a bad idea, just common sense. And yes, do it when the school's out and when people are out of town and people are at their beach houses or lake houses or whatever they're fortunate enough to have. And we all know that. But like you go through this, when I use that the most is during the week. And during the week, when I use it, there's nobody in those seats. There's not a lot of people there, a couple of people there for lunch maybe, but most of the time it's completely empty. So I don't understand what the big benefit is. If the restaurants, I don't know why the restaurants wouldn't, if you allowed to have them close it on the weekends, why would they not want to do that? Just go out and put up the tables and take them back. It's certainly worth their while. I mean, I, the other night I spent 250 bucks for two people at Summit House. That's a lot of money. I think having an extra table out there worth his while, go set it up there when school's out or whatever. But it just seems like, I don't know, these surveys and these studies, they're just meaningless. They're just going to tell you whatever you want to hear. It's just use some common sense. You live here, you know what we're dealing with. We know why we did it originally and it was nice. But now that we're going back to normal life, we don't have that flexibility. We need that road. It's a big deal. Maybe on the weekends, but you know, from April till October, terrible.
Thank you for your comment. Come on up, Mr. Baker.
So there was a question about, or the comment about there not being enough activity. And that's why, one of the things that's recommended is programming there to encourage more activity during the week, during, during the day. Not, yeah, not necessarily restaurant, but other, other types of activity. I mean, if you think about, you know, you get more people on the street, just the basic laws of economics. If you get more people on the street, you're going to have more shoppers. You're going to have more potential for shoppers.
So Dylan Baker, owner of Summit House in Barbacoa, how's everyone, counsel? Thank you, and thank you for putting.
Can you speak up a little?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
I was actually going to recuse myself from this whole conversation. Sitting back there listening, taking it all in, and I understand where everyone's coming from here. But then the last comments, I feel like I really just do have to get up and say something. There is a ton of people in town who love this, who want it. And they come down by the hundreds weekly and enjoy it. They enjoy it during the season, which the season is the outdoor dining season, not the vernal equinox. You know, it's, it's based on the outdoor dining season. People like it. And it's not for our economic viability anymore. We appreciate what that did for us, counsel and members of the community who allowed us to close the street and put the restaurants out there. It was a lifeline, absolutely. In my mind, as a resident and a business owner, this is for the community. People like it and enjoy it. And they're not going to come out tonight on a rainy, cold Tuesday night to tell you that. But I needed to come up and just say, there are a lot of people out there who really, really appreciate this and appreciate the hard work and the heavy lift it is to get it done legally and emotionally to get it done. So that's, that's my statement. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Bond.
Hi, Susan Bowen, Waldron Avenue. I have a question for you and it's, it's an unemotional question. Wouldn't it make sense to test? And if you have to do it again, you have to do it again. But I just, I'm hung up on your 121 seconds wait for a light or wait to get through. Isn't there a way to test if I want to go from the north side to the south side? So if I want to go from the corner, I want to cross in some way. Don't you need to figure out what the delta is in the time it takes me to cross all the way through and not just at that one light? Because if your, if your time at the light or your time going through goes from 111 to 38 seconds or whatever you said, that's not actually true. What you need to test is how long it takes you to get, say, from the corner of Summit Avenue into Forest to Broad Street, say, and test that, whether or not Maple Street is closed. Because that's going to tell you the effect on the traffic rather than just having one light where I think maybe that, your wait might go down at that light from 111 to 38. But your crossing time probably doesn't change. And I guarantee you it gets longer if Maple Street is closed. I was just wondering, I was sitting there thinking about that data and it just doesn't make any sense to me.
The answer is yes, we could, but there is nothing we can do with that data because there are no national standards that tell you you need to traverse from point A to point B in so much time. However, we do have national standards that say if you have to stop more than 80 seconds at a signal, that's too long. If you have to stop more than 55 seconds at a stop sign, that's too long. So from an engineering perspective, there's something we could do with that information. But to get a corridor and find out whether it takes you two minutes or two and a half or three or five or 10 to traverse it, there is nothing scientifically that is accepted in the industry that we do as engineers that would allow me to, to use that information.
Right, just two different data points. With Maple Street closed, it takes you X seconds to do that traverse through downtown Summit. With Maple Street open, it takes you Y seconds to go that same thing. That is an important data point to me.
We could.
Because that test, because the person, the reason that person is only waiting at that light for 37 seconds is because he hasn't, he hasn't crossed Springfield Avenue yet.
And there is so much.
And he has, he's back on Summit Avenue and he's still waiting.
And there is so much you could do. You could do speed studies, you could do pedestrian crossing studies. There's a lot you could do. You know, there is also a cost factor here.
No, no, I'm just saying that this 111 seconds to 38 seconds, I don't think is an important number. Because it doesn't test what we, as residents and leaseholders and business owners, it doesn't test what we want to know. What we want to know is how can I cross time, how can I cross through Summit safely? Most importantly, because these are children we're talking about. And these are commuters who are busy, who are crossing streets. How do we make sure that no one ever dies with the decision we made? That should be our first question. And our second question, it should be, what are we doing to that time or that congestion by changing this one data point, which is closing Maple Street? So unless you know those two numbers and with overlay, of course, of safety over the top of all of it. Unless though you know those two numbers, you're, you're not getting the whole picture.
So let me, let me respond to you. I mean, from a curiosity perspective, I'm with you. Okay, it takes me now 112 seconds to do it. It's going to take me 120 seconds to do it. But that doesn't mean anything to us as engineers because how do you quantify this and how do you take that quantification and turn it into a solution?
You test it on September 15th, 2022, which is when you dig.
I understand, I understand.
And you test it on April 15th, 2023.
I understand, but what is the metric? I'm driving another five seconds. Okay, six is bad, seven is bad, eight is bad. There is no metric to, to gauge.
I think we're talking about the difference between one minute and four minutes or one minute and five minutes. I think it's that big, probably.
So what metric would you use? Would you use three minutes extra or why not four, why not five, why not two and a half?
I'm just saying you present the two data points.
So what I presented to you is something that we do for a living, something that is an acceptable national standards. We do intersections, we do delays, there are standards. That gives us an actual metric that we could solve. There are solutions for it. We can look at the solutions, see if they make sense, if they're practical from a cost perspective, and then make a decision, do we do it or not? I hear you from a curiosity perspective, I'd like to do it myself.
One that's open and one that's closed?
But it would do us no good, by the way. We're going through a very long conversation. Nobody would ever agree on what is the proper amount of delay that is acceptable to a driver from point A to point B.
I'm just saying there's going to be two numbers.
Anyway, you asked your question, I answered it and thank you very much.
Yeah, I think it's time for the next person. Any other comments? Mr. Thorcuff, no. Sit down, please. You've already asked, you've already asked your questions. You've had more than your time. Sir, no. Sir, please sit down. Lots of people have been waiting. It's midnight now. We're not, one, you get one comment per person. Are there any other comments? Okay, if there are no.
So we have one to read and then we're done.
Okay, this email was received from Mark Wadman on Michigan Avenue. I'm opposed to the Maple Street to traffic at any time for the benefit of four local restaurants for the following reasons. Increase of traffic on Summit Avenue when Maple Street is closed to vehicles since those two streets are the only north-south roads crossing Springfield Avenue to downtown. Allowing these four restaurants to profit substantially by increasing the seat capacity by two or three, what is allowed inside their restaurant with no sharing of profit going to the city or the downtown or the landlord. I have been told it is against the law to sell alcohol in the street without a special permit. Number four, the pandemic is over and outside dining in the street is no longer needed for the restaurants to be profitable. Other retail businesses on Maple Street are affected by the street being closed to vehicles, including parking, and it is not fair to them to be able to use, to not to be able to use the street as well. When the hours of outside dining is taken into account compared with the total hours in a day or week or month and based on 50% capacity, the time the street is closed to traffic for no reason, rainy days, cold, wind, breakfast, lunch, overnight, et cetera, one can determine that the street is actually in use for outside dining less than 5% of the time. Not worth it. To see 100 empty tables in the street most of the time is not a positive factor for the downtown Summit. The orange barriers are extremely ugly and make the downtown look, look like a construction area. And finally, parklets should be banned because they take up valuable parking spaces in the downtown, not knowing how much a restaurant pays to the city for a parklet in the street. If a restaurant wants to have sidewalk tables, I see that as being a solution.
Thank you. So I think that wraps up our, this presentation. Thank you so much to SDI and to our presenters. And thank you for your patience. It's been a long evening. So with that, we will. I know. Okay, so we're now up to public comment. And this is for items that we're not going to talk about. Maple Street, we, when we're not talking about anything else on, that's on the agenda, this is non-agenda items.
Yeah, so you guys changed the order of the meeting. Usually presentations are first, public comment, and then council business. So what was the impetus to change the order of the agenda? And is it going to be this way moving forward?
I explained that in my council president preview. The point of this was that we knew this was going to be a long presentation with a lot of questions. We had a number, we had five, we had five ordinance hearings and those were things that people wanted to have comments about. As you saw, people did comment on the five ordinances. And we felt that it was important, because we were voting on those ordinances tonight, that people have the opportunity to comment on those. This is, this presentation, we're not acting on this tonight. So the point was to allow the business to get done and then we did the presentation. And we figured between all of those things, we'd probably cover everything. And we're, we'll be here for a public comment as long as people have comments, so.
So do you think it's going to be this way moving forward or is it up in the air?
It will not be for next week. I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't know what it's going to be for next year yet.
Okay.
May I just say something for a second? And it's not taking away from your time.
That's okay.
When I was first elected mayor, public comments were, had been for generations at the end of the meeting. And David and I do, when he was president, switched it to the front. So, you know, it was an experiment, maybe it'll continue, maybe it won't, I don't know.
Okay, so it's up in the air. Thank you. And then the second question I have is, who reviews the surveys before they go out?
That was all done by the consultant.
This was done by the consultant.
So SDI see the survey before it went out?
They said they did not.
No.
So no one from town saw the survey?
No.
This is, this is not a public comment item.
Actually for all surveys that go out, or any surveys.
If the city sends out a survey, our communications and staff members and members of various committees will look at it. If it's sent out by a separate entity, we do not see it.
I, okay, so, thanks. I wanted to just, I did get a message from our communications person who said that she does send, she has a list of print media and she sends all of the press releases, all of the things that go on to the Summit Times, which goes to every household. So that's, you know, we do a print media contacts and she does send to them. So I just wanted to, so it's electronic and print media. I just wanted to clarify that. Are there any other comments? Yes, but not on Maple Street.
I was just going to ask about.
Sir, you have to.
I just wanted to mention that when Lisa had mentioned about a permanent wall and gentleman had mentioned possibly raising up the street to meet the curb. We have a flooding problem in Summit. And when the, when the sewers get overloaded, because they're only 75-year storm sewers, they should be 100-year storm sewers, that floods and the water comes up, goes over the sidewalk. And in many of the buildings, it goes, enters the basement. So if you ever had any intention of raising the street, it would cause a huge water problem for all the buildings on Maple Street.
Okay, thank you, good comment. Are there any other comments?
Bob Palavsky, Three Crest Lake Court. I just wanted to talk about something that happened at the last meeting. So last meeting's fair share housing presentation contained a significant discussion of methodology, overlay zones and other esoteric matters regarding Mount Laurel and fair share housing. I'm not here to discuss methodology or the best way to count to 50. I'm interested in the bottom line, which boils down to this. Did the city actually promise to add 50 affordable housing units by 2025? The answer is no. Look no further than our settlement agreement, a compromise we made with fair share housing. My understanding is that the city and its lawyers heavily negotiated the terms of that agreement, specifically so as not to bind the city to any overly burdensome obligations or unattainable goals. And there's a lot of great language to that end. This Kevin McGoy pointed out in November. It says Summit shall take all reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal of facilitating the construction of 50 new affordable units. It also says the parties recognize that Summit may make all reasonable efforts and still not achieve the development of 50 units and may not accomplish the room steps toward the development of those units. On November 14th, the city's fair share housing lawyer, council president Fox and councilman Vartan took the position on the record that Summit's obligations exceed what is set forth in the plain language of the settlement agreement. They said Summit must either arrange to have 50 new affordable housing units built or planned in the process of being built by 2025. They said it repeatedly, including when Ms. Fox interjected her own answer to Mr. McGoy's question of, do we have to do 50? Ms. Fox, you answered and you said, yes, we do. You also said, now please sit down, which is a familiar refrain from you when Mr. McGoy's in the room. But that was a joke. By making these statements, you may have unnecessarily imposed a heightened burden on the city. Goals are fine and a goal of 50 is admirable and I hope we get there. But we may not have to get to 50 and we don't want to have to get to 50. On the off chance we ever do end up in litigation with fair share housing, we need to be able to argue that the settlement agreement only requires our best efforts and that we satisfied our obligations, even though 50 new units may not have come to fruition. You need to reconsider your misstatements and correct them on the public record for the sake of the city and yourselves. More than a few residents think your misstatements were deliberate. They think you want to inflate Summit's fair share housing obligations because it'll advance your vision for Broad Street West. But I think you know local government is not about the council imposing its will on the city or implementing any national party's agenda. And I think you also know that local government is not about any of your own desires to signal virtue or impress folks in Trenton or Washington by duping the public with faulty legal analysis or fear mongering with fancy jargon like builder's remedy. I think you'll do the right thing. Will you?
That's a rhetorical question for me.
It's an actual question.
Thank you for your comment.
Sir, do you want to give me your statement?
Sure.
Ms. Berger, did you have a question?
Oh, no.
No, you're just standing? Okay. Okay.
I get to comment all these times because you move this to the ends and now I get to listen to what else is coming up that I may have a question about. I actually was, didn't know Bob was going to say that. He was hitting on many of the points that I had. I sent, I think, all of you an email and I didn't get any responses back. And it was exactly to that point. That settlement agreement is extremely clear in what it says. I think there's a couple of people up on the dais that have legal degrees. And if you read the document as a lawyer, you understand. If you read that as a layman, you should understand it. It's very clear, it's repetitive, it's redundant, so that there's no misunderstanding of what the obligations actually are. It really bothered me that that presentation, when it came in, it seemed like council. It really bothered me that that presentation, when it came in, it seemed like Councilman Vartan was coming up cherry picking points and arguing basically like he was arguing for fair share housing. Now, also, I want to put to bed this idea that I'm against affordable housing, or any of this is about affordable housing. What this is, is it's very clearly, if we need to do something, if we have to do something, that may cause us to do things we would not otherwise have done. That's why this is very important. And that's why I tried to get the attorney to answer it clearly, which she didn't, for I don't know what reasons. At the time, I think she was caught off guard. I don't think she understood the history of it. As a matter of fact, I know she didn't understand the history of everything, and why people were asking her such questions. But the way Bob described the settlement agreement, actually, in fact, the settlement agreement, we are not required to have, to ensure that 50 are constructed by 2025. We are not. That's definitive, absolutely definitive. We do not have to have in the works plans for them to be developed by 2025. That's definitive. That is absolute. So just, can nobody ever question my motivations for pointing this out? Please.
Kevin, this isn't about you.
Well, it does, it, unfortunately, people do talk, yeah, I know, you're going to time me out now, but unfortunately-
No, I'm not. You still have a minute.
Okay. You, you can say that, but I, people have told me, and I know that, yeah, oh, Kevin's against affordable housing, that's why he's doing this. You accuse me of it, in person.
Kevin, you flatter yourself if you think we spend that much time talking about you.
No, it's not. It's just when it comes up with, oh, well, Kevin's doing this because he's against affordable housing. You accuse me of that, it continues to go on, and it's not the case. I'm not, you guys were the ones that didn't require one unit more than was absolutely required. You can ask them, you can require them to do 20%, you can require them to do 25%. You can do whatever you want. You could change an ordinance and make it more than 15%. I'm not doing that. I'm just saying, if we had to do 50 by 2025, that really limits what our possibilities are with Broad Street West. And we may be forced into doing something we wouldn't otherwise have done. That's the entire reason why it's very important for you to be very clear and not fear monger to people, as you're saying, because it is. When you start talking about builder's remedy, builder's remedy's not going to happen at Summit. It's not. Like, you can say, oh, yes it will, yes it will. Talk to any professional. This is not where that happens. Okay? We've done a very good job over the years with affordable housing. We have an economic diversity here that doesn't exist in some other towns surrounding us. This is a very affluent town, yes, but again, if you look at the numbers, we have an economic diversity that's much better than the towns around us, which is the reason why we had that settlement agreement, and why that settlement agreement is so beneficial to us. Do you think that's because fair share housing wanted it to be beneficial to us? No. It's because we've done the right thing. We have done it. We're not in the same position as the others. So don't trade that away and use it for a reason to do something that was Broad Street West. That's always been my big concern, my big problem with it. There were two reasons for doing something that was so out of scale and character, and they were financial, which was a complete joke. You, you see that now. And the other one was, we had to do 50 by 2025. And that's not true. So we don't need to do something and blow something up and change the landscape of our town for those reasons. We don't. That's the whole reason why I entered into this conversation. I wanted to say that publicly. You guys don't respond to any of my emails, ever. Like, when was the last time you responded to an email mine?
Look, I'm not getting into this discussion.
Right.
You know what, because you, because I respond-
No, so this is the place, you make me come here to talk, because otherwise I don't get any response from any of you.
Kevin, you, you know, if I respond to an email, I get 50 emails back from you. I get texts in the middle of the night, "We're not doing this anymore. Stop."
Just respond with facts, accurate facts, and you won't get responses.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Well, I just wanted to say happy birthday to my Caroline, because it's now 12 o'clock, and it's her birthday, so happy birthday, Caroline. So I just wanted a little update on Broad Street West and the finance committee, unless Kevin's completely kicked off right now. If you guys could just update us on the finance committee. Keep looking at me like I have 10 heads. If there's any update on the finance committee, I don't know, but if you could just update me on the finance committee, if there's any updates on Broad Street West. Yeah, that's about it. And then I'm going to go to bed.
I think she means the Broad Street West finance committee.
Broad Street West, yeah, finance committee. Is there another finance committee I don't know about? But yeah, Broad Street West?
Yes, the finance committee.
I still have a little bit of energy, I'm going to bed.
So there is a, thank you, council president. Thank you, Ms. Gagnon.
You awake? Yeah, ready to go?
I am.
Okay, good.
There is a Broad Street West Advisory Committee.
Yes, that's it. Advisory, finance committee.
There's a finance committee, which is a council committee. So the Broad Street West Advisory Committee has not met. And the reason why is because we do not have a proposal for the developers. When we do, we will bring the group together and we will talk about it. That's the-
Okay, so you're waiting for a new proposal from the developers?
Correct.
Okay, and they're working with residents for Summit, I guess? Is that what we talked about last time? They're talking to us?
Who are they?
Your group. You. Right? Yeah. Okay, so that's what we're waiting for? Just a little update to give people?
Yeah, we're waiting for that.
The group is not met. The group is not met.
Not met? Okay, all right, so.
The finance, the Broad Street West Advisory Committee-
So we're kind of waiting just till the next set of New Year's?
Do you want us to do it over Christmas? I mean, generally, people would like us to wait till January. Yeah, but it's just, it's just that we haven't gotten-
I'm just curious. I have no idea. People are asking me, and I have no idea what the next step is, so we're just-
After we get the proposal, we'll tell people we've got the proposal, and then we'll get, then we'll get the committee together.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? We had one other.
Council president, with your permission, I'm just going to summarize.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett wrote in precisely about the reasonable and best efforts that has already been discussed here by Mr. Palowski and Mr. McGoy. And it was emailed to all of council earlier today, so with that, I'll put it into the record and be part of the minutes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, so with that, I'm going to close the public comment period, and I guess we are now moving on to council members' new comments and new business. Does anyone have anything?
I actually have some new business.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I know it's been a long night, but there's something on my mind I'd like to bring to the forefront that I think is important. There's, I want to talk about criminal activity in town, specifically car thefts. Due to the excellent work of the Summit Police Department, their increased patrols, increased diligence by residents, we haven't had a car stolen in Summit since September. But there have been attempts, numerous attempts, and some other activity around town, and I think residents feel afraid and scared. And this has been something that is at the forefront of our Safety and Health Committee. It's not on this agenda, but it's on our agenda, and there's, there's a few interventions that we're starting to talk about and flesh out that I'd like to bring up here with all of us to share at this, at this time. And our idea is specifically targeting, or attempting to deter some of the car theft activity in town. So my idea is a three-pronged approach. The first is, we are considering enacting a municipal ordinance that would fine someone for attempting to steal a car in town. This is something that's been done in Monmouth County, and I can talk more about it in, in a little while. And we would partner that by strengthening the relationship between residents and the police, and having residents, you know, we do that by way of a community pledge whereby residents would pledge to the Summit Police that they will then lock their car and secure their key fob. And then the third part of this approach would be to invest in our infrastructure, to augment our existing geofence system. Right now, we have four license plate reader cameras strategically placed around our town. And I know on our capital budget workshop coming up, there's going to be a proposal from the police to augment that to a total of 18 cameras, rolled out over the next several years. And with that, we can create a seamless barrier around our city. So the combination of these three things, each one in and of itself may not be enough to measurably make an impact on some of these attempted car thefts in town. Well, with the exception of maybe the geofence system. But if we do all three together, then it creates a synergy whereby each one kind of strengthens the others. So I think it's a thoughtful approach. I, you know, we, we can't just do one. It's not just enough for a resident, to tell residents to lock their car. That's not enough. We need to do other things as well. I'm also happy to say that the idea, the seed was planted for this ordinance by a resident who actually shared it with us, this idea. I know it's been done in other municipalities in Monmouth County.
In two.
Oh, in two other municipalities. And lastly, we have a budget, a capital budget workshop coming up on the 14th, where we will be weighing this idea of the geofence, among other things, and I encourage anyone to come and join us there. And I wanted to share this idea, you know, that's on part of safety, with this whole group here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Levine. I think that's a, I think it's a great idea of how to proceed, and I, I hope that, you know, the residents will partner with us on this, and I think, I think it's-
I have, I represent the towns that these ordinances were passed in, so I have them. I was explaining to Dr. Levine that the ordinances that were drafted in Home Del and Marlboro, they are, their layout is a little bit different. They have, you know, minimum one-acre lots, so they have some things if you're staying at the end of somebody's driveway. It's, it was a little, their ordinance doesn't totally fit here, so we're going to work on an ordinance that Dr. Levine can share with the Public Safety Committee and get the input of the Police Department. But really, the whole purpose of it is if somebody goes up to a car and starts opening the door, trying to unlock it, or is appearing in the car and they're on your private property, that triggers a $1,000 fine. And, and it's just one of the steps to try to discourage it.